Ladies and gentlemen, good evening, happy new year and welcome to tonight's special committee of the whole meeting. This meeting is called to order. Let the record show that we have all the members of this committee present. Mr. Bruno is joining us by home. Just a reminder, tonight, while we are always council members and we are always committee members, tonight, we're also serving as board of directors for the public utilities. So absorbing, ingesting, digesting, and considering all this information, that's the hat we should be wearing this evening. With that, I would like to... Mr. Babica, are you going to provide some preliminary comments?
I'll do an introduction.
Okay, fantastic. Mr. Babica, the floor is yours. We're going to discuss item one, which is the 2023 Water and Sewer Rate Study Presentation.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I will be filling in tonight for the water superintendent, who had unavoidable issues. Dave Hyder from Stantec Consulting will be doing the formal presentation, and then at the end, I will be available to do a Q and A session with the city council and the committee. The results you see before you tonight are about results of a nine-month rate study that the city staff completed with Stantec, as well as comparing to other municipalities within the region. So without further ado, because I know everybody wants to move on to other things, I'm going to bring forth David Hyder. Thank you.
Good evening.
Trouble you just to spell your last name for our benefit.
Sure. It's H-Y-D-E-R.
Just like it sounds.
Yep, right, or with a H.
And just for your benefit as well and everyone else's, Mr. Bruno will be off-screen during the presentation, but he's still with us, so don't say anything about him.
That's right. We'll check and make sure he stays awake.
Yeah, exactly.
Try to keep everybody entertained. All right, so I'll jump right in. We do have a fair amount to cover.
Excellent.
This is the Water and Sewer Rate Study culminating about nine months of work, as Rich mentioned. In our agenda this evening, I'm just going to go over a little bit of background, talk a little bit about Stantec, some issues we're seeing in the utilities around the country. Then we'll primarily focus on the financial planning, look at a 10-year forecast for the utilities, and we'll talk about rate structures, look at bill impacts, and then wrap up with summary and some recommendations for your consideration. So just a little bit about Stantec, I'm part of the financial services team, and this is pretty much what we do all across the country, water and sewer rates. We focus on the financial management aspects of utilities. I've been doing this for about 25 years, and so my primary focus is on water and sewer rates. I've done a fair amount of work in suburban Chicago area related to water, sewer, stormwater So in terms of the industry challenges, there's a number of challenges that we've seen over the last couple decades, and some of them are more recent, and I've highlighted them here. And I'll just go through each of them real quickly. The first one, which is somewhat counterintuitive, is that we've seen a significant drop on a per-account basis in water and sewer usage. And that's the slide shows since like 1999 through 2016, there's about a 22% drop per household in water usage. And while that's great from an environmental standpoint, it's great that people are using the resources more wisely, that's really the cash register for the utility. And utilities revenues are, since they're based on that, and the fact that most of your expenditures are fixed, regardless of how much water you produce or sewage you treat, most of your costs are fixed, that has a direct impact on your revenues. So that's been placing pressure on utilities. Probably the biggest issue in addition to that is aging infrastructure. A lot of the infrastructure that's in place has been put in place 70, 80, 100 years ago around the country, and the need to repair and replace that infrastructure has placed a significant burden on utilities. It's obviously much more expensive to replace it today. A lot of the federal funding that was there when the systems were put in place isn't there today. The other, some other issues, regulatory resiliency, EPA isn't becoming less stringent, they're becoming more stringent. We'll talk about lead service lines tonight. The need to address those regulatory requirements is placing additional pressure. We have aging workforce. It's difficult to replace that institutional knowledge. Most recently, we're seeing significant operational cost increases in chemicals, energy, things of that sort, as well as materials. And so really, all this culminates a lot of somewhat bad news in terms of how do we provide affordable service while maintaining a viable utility? And that's really what we're trying to do this evening and talk about. So in terms of the rate study approach, there's really two key components. The first is how much, and that defines how much revenue do we need on the system, because what does it cost us to provide the service? And that gets into the financial planning aspects. Our goal there is to achieve financial policies and targets within the utility. We want to fund the investments that are required to keep it sustainable and make sure that we can sustain the operations of the system. And then the other component is not, once we've defined how much we need to collect, it's how we collect that, how do we structure the rates? And we want to come up with simple, equitable, and sustainable rates. We want to balance providing affordability with the financial objectives that are laid out for the utility. We want to be able to clearly communicate to customers, this is what it costs to provide the service. So first, I'm going to jump into the financial planning development, and this really gets into three primary tasks. The first of which is we use a financial model to build a 10-year forecast, and we're building a forecast of the revenue requirements in the system, so that's the cost of providing service both today and then looking out over a long-term planning period. We go out over 10 years, as I mentioned. And that's a forecast of the system operating costs, so your day-to-day operations, we're including the capital investments in the system to rehab and replace in the system. And we also have to take into account that you've issued debt in the past, and so you have some debt obligations and existing debt you have to pay. So once we have that forecast of costs, we can then look at a forecast of revenues, and the first step there is to take your current rates and assume we don't change rates and we just look at changing demands on the system and growth in customers, and develop a forecast of your revenues at your current rates. Once we have those two, we can compare them and see if we're meeting our key metrics. So do we have sufficient revenue to meet our costs or revenue requirements? Are we following in line with some policies we have in terms of targets for reserves, financial policies? And then are we able to pay our debt service, meet our debt service coverage requirements? And so diving into some of the details there in terms of our financial planning assumptions that we've made to look at this 10-year forecast, is we're starting with your cash balance as of April 30 of 2022 for the water and sewer utility. We're taking your fiscal year '24 budget, which is detailed, and we forecast that forward for modeling purposes, and we're looking at each of the expenditures on a line item by line item basis and forecasting those forward using different inflation factors. For example, chemicals, you can see, energy, we're assuming at 4%, salaries, wages at 3%, things of that sort. You do have existing debt on the system, got about $25 million worth of existing debt, so you have to make those payments. Your payment in fiscal year '23 is about $3 million. And then really, the big-ticket item is the capital. You have a significant planned capital spending over the 10-year projection period, it's $85 million. Some of the highlighted projects here are the $12 million for the sanitary river crossing. You've got 17 for solids handling at the wastewater treatment plant, and then $22 million for water main and that lead service line replacement that I talked about. At the end of the presentation, Rich will be able to dive into some of the details on the projects if you want to talk about them in more detail. Because of the magnitude of the projects, we are assuming that the majority of them would be debt-funded, so you'd go out to borrow, given the size of the projects. So that's the expenditure side. On the revenue side, we are forecasting, as I mentioned, your existing rates, assuming some change in number of accounts in the system and some volume changes. So we do have connection growth. 30 equivalent residential units in fiscal year '23 are anticipated to come on the system, and then about 10-year, I'm sorry, 10 new ERUs or equivalent residential units, equivalent to a single-family home coming on the system each year over that projection period. We are incorporating some anticipated additional industrial customers, so that's factored in. When it comes to non-rate revenues, there are revenues such as interest income, miscellaneous fees, things of that sort. We're just assuming that those are going to be flat going forward over the projection period. And then the final component, which is our variable, is rate adjustments, and that's changing the water and sewer rates. And we evaluate those based on the need to meet some targets, as I mentioned, those metrics. So we want to maintain three months in an operating reserve within the fund, and we want to be able to at least pay our debt service and meet one-time's debt service coverage. I did want to mention that it's been four years since you last raised water and sewer rates, so your rates last were adjusted in May of 2019, and so they have been constant. Customers have been paying the same for the past four years. So a little bit more detail, this is a forecast of your operating expenditures, so you can see water blue, sewer green, totaling about $6 million in fiscal year '23 in terms of operating. So this is the day-to-day operations and maintenance, it's the staff, the chemicals, energy, things of that sort. And then forecasting that forward, we're at about $8 million by fiscal year '33. And then the other big component is the capital, and so this shows just by category of capital over the next 10 years, the capital investments. So some of those bigger ones that I mentioned, the sanitary river crossing, they're in yellow. The solids handling at the wastewater treatment facility in green are the bigger components, so you can see you do have a bit of a spike here in the next couple of years. That steady investment in the water main infrastructure is the light blue, so that's the lead service line replacements and water mains. So pretty healthy CIP, as I mentioned, $85 million in total. And so what that turns into in terms of future debt, so this shows your annual debt service payments on the system, so blue is what you have outstanding, and those are the payments that you have to make to retire your existing debt. And then orange would be the new debt and the annual debt service payments associated with funding the capital program. So you can see you're ranging at about $3 million up to close to $5 million in annual debt service payments, given the capital and the debt service borrowing. So now I want to just bring it all together and kind of show you what the... Whoops. There we go. Make sure I have a pointer here. So this is just the panel from the financial model, so this is the forecast of the 10-year projection, and this is that first metric that I was talking about where we have no rate adjustments. And let me just orient you a little bit in terms of what we're looking at, because this is the important part. So up at the top, we have obviously the fiscal years over the 10-year projection period, and then the water rate and the sewer rate plans are the adjustments. So under this scenario, we're assuming no changes in water rates or sewer rates. This is that debt service coverage, and so we're looking at primarily that all-in debt service coverage. Once you drop below 1, that means that you're no longer able to pay your debt service, and that would be problematic with IEPA and getting a new loan. And then below that, we have the single-family bill, which is about $60 today for water and sewer service at 500 cubic feet per month. So again, under this scenario, no change in the bill. And finally, down at the bottom, I just have some metrics, graphical representations of how the fund's doing under this scenario. So to the left here, we have the operating fund, and the line here is the target that we would want to try to maintain, that three months. This is showing that without any rate increases, we would essentially go negative in our cash balance by fiscal year '25. And the reason for that is if we come over to the middle, this graph just shows our cash out of the system, so our spending in orange, and our cash in would be the revenues in the system from the existing rates. And so clearly, our cash out versus our cash in, we're spending more than we're taking in, and therefore, we have those negative results. This just represents the expenses by type, and then finally, down at the bottom, the capital plan, which we've talked about. And the purple is the amount that we'd be funding with debt. The green is the amount that we'd be funding with cash. So clearly, this, if you move forward with the capital plan with the increased operating cost, not adjusting rates isn't a viable option. You'd essentially go negative by fiscal year '25. You essentially wouldn't be able to borrow from IEPA because they wouldn't allow you to with the financial results that you're seeing. So the next slide just runs a scenario to show what happens if we just do what we term just-in-time rate increases. So what if we wait and increase rates as soon as we hit our targets? So our operating fund stays at that three months. And essentially, what this would do would be allow you to have a 2.5% increase in fiscal year '24, but then you'd have to do almost a 20% increase in fiscal year '25, and then it would drop down, and you'd be bouncing around in terms of the needs in the system in terms of those rate adjustments. It would ultimately bring your cash in and cash out in alignment, and again, it would allow you to meet that target, but it would be a really sizable increase all at once on customer bills. And generally, based on our experience, this type of one-time adjustment doesn't go over very well within the community. So we came up with a recommended approach, which would be more of a long-term sustainability, smoothed approach of adjusting rates. And so under this plan, we would do 7.5% increases for the next two years, and then be at 5 for a couple of years, and then long-term, maybe around inflationary increases. But ultimately, we're focused more on the next five years, looking what those rate adjustments would do. And so if you did a 7.5% increase, that would allow you to stay around that target. You can see your cash in versus your cash out would be aligned. It does allow you, with this longer-term plan, to borrow less, which would mean you'd have less interest expense, more cash funding, more sustainability on the system. And ultimately, what you can see under this approach would be your typical customer's bill, next year, fiscal year '24, would go up by about $4 per month, and then close to another $4 the next year per month under that approach. So again, that's our recommendation in terms of more of a smoothed phasing in versus that one-time big adjustment. So now I'm going to shift gears a little bit and just talk about rate structures. So this is the second piece, how we collect water and sewer rate structures. And just wanted first to talk about some pricing goals and objectives. So typically, the way we would look at this is we want to try to provide customer affordability, and really, that's the ability to provide service for those basic needs at an affordable price, so those minimal quantities of water at an affordable price. We want to try to have rate and revenue stability, meaning that we don't have those one-time rate shocks, like I talked about, where you'd see a 20% increase. So again, trying to have, limit the volatility in the system, and then ultimately, not come up with a system that's too complex, so you could administer it and explain it to your So your current rate structure is shown here, just a reminder of how you currently charge. So you, really, two key components. You have a base charge, so customers pay a fixed charge every month based on their meter size, regardless of any use. So if they're out of town for an entire month, they would pay this base charge, and it scales based on meter size. The vast majority of your customers are 3/4-inch, and they're residential. Your larger customers that are industrial, commercial, would have those larger meter sizes. So you can see these are the current rates for water and for sewer, and again, you pay those regardless. Within those fixed charges or those base charges, you do get 100 cubic feet of water, an allowance based on their per-equivalents. So if you have a larger meter, you get multiples of that. So you do get some water with that fixed charge. And then over to the right, we have the actual usage rates, so your water rates are shown up above. For single-family customers, you have what's called a declining block rate. So for the first 0 to 1,500 cubic feet, it's $5.31 per 100 cubic feet. Once you go over 1,500, it's $4.91 per 100 cubic feet. Once you go over 20,000, which is pretty rare for a single-family, you'd pay $4.75. Your non-single-family customers all pay in that first tier, the $5.31. And then on the sewer side, you have a non-industrial rate of $2.91 and an industrial rate of $4.37, and that's charged for every 100 cubic feet used over that minimum that's included in the base charge. So we looked at two different alternatives based on our discussions with city staff and some complaints within the community and things of that sort that have come up over the years. So the first rate structure options is just status quo. We would keep the rate structure as it is, no changes to the water and sewer rate structure. We would just across-the-board increase rates by that 7.5% for both the fixed charges as well as the usage charges. So under that approach, everybody's bill would go up 7.5% regardless of how much you use. The alternative is just to change on the sewer side, and it would be to apply a cap to sewer bills that's based on 130% of your winter quarter average. So this would be applied outside of the winter months. If, once you use above 130% of your winter quarter usage, you would no longer pay sewer charges on that quantities of water. Be applied only to single-family residential, and essentially, what it's designed to do, it recognizes that irrigation usage does not return to the sewer system. So right now, if you're irrigating, you're paying for those, you're paying sewage basically for that water that's not coming back to the system. It would require, because you would lose some billable quantities of water for sewage, would require a rate increase be applied to keep the revenue steady. So I'll show you what that looks like here on the next slide. So this shows the fiscal year '24 rate alternatives. The base charges would be the same regardless of the rate structure option, so they would go up 7.5% for water, 7.5% for sewer. The same on the water charges. The water charges would go up regardless of whether you do the status quo or the winter quarter average, they'd go up that 7.5%. However, when we come down to the non-industrial sewer rate, if you don't do the winter quarter average, we would just increase the non-industrial sewer rate to 7.5%, so it'd go up to 3.13. But if we do do the winter quarter average, because we're losing those billable quantities of water that are being sprayed onto the lawn on the sewer side, you'd have to raise the sewer rate a little bit to 3.61 to get to the same amount of revenue. The industrial rate would go up the 7.5%. I'd be happy to take questions. I see some, looks like folks are 100% following. Hopefully, as I go through some of the examples, maybe that'll help as well.
Do you want questions at the end, Mr. Hyder?
I can take them now.
You can take them now as well?
Sure.
Thank you.
Ms. Ruby?
Just the winter quarter average, can you give me a little bit of background on what that means?
Yep. So let's say, let's say your winter quarter average is 100. So during December, January, and February, let's say you use 100 cubic feet per month. That's what you're actually using in your house. So then when we come to the summer, we would say, for your sewer bill, we're only going to charge you up to when you use 130% of what you use during that winter, because we're assuming that when you go above 130%, that that water's not being used indoors, it's being used outdoors, and therefore, we shouldn't be charging you sewer for it. It's essentially a cap. Does that make sense?
No.
I can try to...
Go ahead.
Sure.
I don't know if I am interpreting this correctly, but when, if we, if we go to the capping at 130% of the winter quarter average...
Yep.
But then we raise rates, we're not really recognizing any difference to the average rate payer, right? I mean, they could, they could, we're still going to get our pound of flesh.
You're still gonna, but you could argue you're going to get it from the right people. You could argue that somebody that's irrigating right now a lot is paying a lot of sewer for a lot of sewage that they're not actually sending to the system.
Right.
So they're essentially overpaying for sewer and subsidizing those.
I was not interpreting right.
Yep.
Got it.
Yep.
After Ms. Berger, we'll recognize Mr. Bruno, then Ms. Mayor.
Is that really that common? I mean, would you have that many rate payers that would actually, that would actually impact the use of the winter quarter?
Yeah, we, we look, we looked at your data for the last couple of years, and about 70% of your customers would see at least one month where they would see a benefit from it.
And is this something customers do notice? I'm not somebody who waters my lawn very often, so is this something customers would notice, or that, I mean, when you talk about the communication piece, you'd have to work on that, that's...
If Bob was here, he would say they definitely notice. I know he gets a tremendous number of complaints about it. So your average customer that's not irrigating probably isn't going to notice, but your irrigators or that use a lot of water outside the home would certainly notice. And we do have some sample bills here in a second.
But they would be paying on the water, they're paying on the water side for that.
Yeah, no changes to the water.
I'm just trying to think, like, what's the demand, or what's the, I mean, we talk about environmental impact, or, but they're...
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you think, think, if I use 10,000, and I know you, I always struggle with cubic feet, but let's say you use 10,000 gallons in a month, and only 3,000 is used indoor, inside your house, you're essentially paying for sewer treatment on 7,000 gallons is never going to come back to the treatment plant. And so you're essentially subsidizing those that don't irrigate by paying for that sewage. And there are communities that use this type of approach just to discourage irrigation, but generally, it's better done on the water side from our perspective. This, I believe St. Charles uses this approach 130%. It's not, it's fairly common within the industry.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Bruno, remotely, sir. Mr. Bruno, I believe you're muted, sir. Let's go to Ms. Mayor, then to Mr. Caven.
You're pointing out irrigation as a source of this water that doesn't come back into this system, but isn't it also cooling systems that can use water without going back into the, into the system and pools and things like that?
Yeah, so typically, if it's a cooling system, that would be handled on a case-by-case basis for a big industrial customer. I know there's, I don't recall whether, Rich, whether you have agreements under that, but that would typically, would be a case where you'd do that. You could certainly, for a single family, if they're filling their pool, that would be recorded within that 130%.
Okay. Computer audio is up. It looks fine on our end. They do have one more thing.
Just read his lips.
Or he could submit a question in the chat if he wants to do that. Yeah, either or. I'm not sure why we're not getting his audio right now.
We'll shoot him a text and let him know. Ms. Mayor, the floor is still yours, then Mr. Caven?
Yeah, I have one other question that I'm going to try to articulate, it might not come out very clearly. So over the years, we have been collecting the bills based on no correction for that, and we still have these capital projects on both sides, and we're still in a position where the numbers aren't right. Have you looked at back correcting, how, where we would be if we, are we going to adjust enough on the sewer side if we correct for that still?
Yeah, we didn't look backwards, but we, we, it is a, we look at it as a zero-sum game. So if we're, if we take, and you know, there's fluctuations because of weather and things of that sort, so usage patterns next summer may look different than past summer, but we do look at all of your customers, all of the usage, and say, well, if we were to apply this cap, how much less sewer volumes are we going to have, and what do we need to increase the rate to be, to generate the revenue? So this plan, assuming things hold the way they typically have in the past in terms of weather and things of that sort, would generate the revenue that you need for the utilities.
Anything else, Amy? Mr. Caven, sir, and then we will read Mr. Bruno's question that he...
Okay. I'm happy to see the, I'm happy to see that the cap is in there. I have had numerous people that have brought this up as a concern, whether it be somebody with, like you had indicated, swimming pools or other different homeowners' associations or subdivisions that have to do a certain amount of irrigation. So I definitely like that idea. Additionally, when we were talking about these additional capital projects, and you were showing the total number of, you know, right now for this upcoming year, it's like $3 million, and then for a certain number of years, when we, when we go to look for an additional, additional financing, is that something that you submit more project by project, or do you go ask for the one larger amount that you know that you're going to need to use over the course of, you know, the seven, eight, nine years that you had showed on the slide?
Now, you do, you have the access to use the IEPA, which gives you, I forget, the rates are still really low, like less than 2%, I believe. And it's generally done on a project-by-project basis, so you can't go and ask them for $85 million. You'd need to do...
Yeah. And then, when you take one of those loans out, say it was for the, I think one of the amounts was around 12 or 16, so you go, how long do you have to repay that? I know you were showing how much we'd be making in payments over the course of the next 10 years, but from that initial, hey, we took out this 16...
Yep.
How much time do you have?
They're 20-year loans.
They're 20-year, okay.
Yep.
That's all I have right now, thank you.
Ms. Dawkins, we'll read Mr. Bruno's questions. Mr. Hyder?
Okay, so he was asking if the WQA is broadly used and found fairly accurate in our region, and I think you mentioned St. Charles, but he wanted to know if that's kind of a standard.
Yeah, I don't know if that I would say it's a standard. I think it's, there are communities...
the next ten years, but from that initial, hey, we took out this sixteen...
Yep.
How much time do you have?
They're twenty-year loans.
They're twenty-year, okay.
Yep.
That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Ms. Dawkins, we'll read Mr. Bruno's questions. Mr. Hyder?
Okay, so he was asking if the W Q A is broadly used and found fairly accurate in our region. And I think you mentioned St. Charles, but he wanted to know if that's kind of a standard.
Yeah, I don't know if that I would say it's a standard. I think it's, there are communities that do it. It may be more like thirty percent of communities would do it, but it's not, it's not the vast majority. But I know that it's a, it's a common issue and a common complaint, just in terms of addressing the equity of the issue.
Mr. Swanson, forgive me, I could barely see over that far, so...
I thought you forgot my name.
No, I thought, you blended right in there. I thought, oh my lord.
I'm not exactly sold on the hundred and thirty percent. It seems to me that it's flipping the other way, and we're saying that the non-irrigating households should subsidize the irrigating households. And I would like to know, on average, what would that mean on a monthly bill? Do we have an estimate of what that impact would be?
Yep.
For a non-irrigating family?
Yeah, I do have some examples.
Okay. General numbers, or you're going to get to that later?
Yeah, I'll go through it.
And I had some questions in your assumptions early on.
Sure.
And one was, you mentioned, demand has gone down twenty percent in the past twenty, twenty-two percent in the past twenty years.
Right.
Is that factored continuing in your analysis over the ten-year spread?
Yeah, we do continue to assume that there's going to be a gradual, we assume a pretty gradual, like, half a percent change on a per-account basis.
Okay.
All of our clients keep asking us when that's going to stop. It's got to stop, they say, but it keeps, if you look at Europe, typically, in the U.S. right now, a typical single, individual use about eighty gallons per day. And in Europe, they're down to about, I think it's forty-five gallons per day. And it's just a fixture change-out, more and more efficient usage, things of that sort. So I think we have a long ways to go to continue to see those changes.
You also mentioned that there are some new industrial customers being added to our portfolio over the ten-year period. What would the impact be to our portfolio if they did not occur? Are they significant?
Yeah, they're, they're pretty significant.
Okay. So, so the assumption is that that is a definite. And if they don't happen, does all of this go out the window, or are we in good shape?
I think there would have to be some adjustment, and ideally, I think the adjustment may be just to delay capital to some extent. You could still, you have some flexibility there in terms of, I can tell you, if they don't come, and things hold the course, it would be, you would drop further below that minimum. And it'd be just challenges to maintain three months in that operating fund. But we are assuming that they're, they are coming in.
Okay.
Yep.
And then the chart that's up there right now, we're showing variable price decreases for customers who use more water. And I was wondering, why do we want to do that? Is the goal to push, pump through as much water as possible? Or is it cheaper for us to process more water?
Yeah, it's a structure you've had in place for quite a while. I don't know how long, going back, it might be at least fifteen years or so that you've had. So this isn't a new structure that we're recommending, a declining block rate. But the argument would be, yes, that you do have, there are marginal decreases in the cost as people use more water because of the fact that the majority of your costs are fixed. And I know that's counter to the concept of conservation, and so you're trying to strike the balance there of maintaining a viable system while encouraging conservation. I will say, the vast majority, I think up to sixty-five percent of your customers use seven hundred cubic feet or less. So you don't have a lot of customers that get into those. I don't know that you have any customers, to be honest, that get up into the twenty thousand range on the single-family side. And those, they're the only ones that would be eligible for it. So vast majority really play that, pay that unit rate.
Do we have a supply constraint? Is our supply unlimited, where it doesn't matter what we're pumping through? Or at some point, are we going to have to dig deeper wells? So, again, conservation does come into play if we have constraints on the system. So I guess I see there...
Sure.
We're encouraging using more water. With the irrigation, we're encouraging irrigation to make it cheaper to do so, again, using more water. So I guess, I'd like to know, if the supply is unlimited, great. But if we have constraints, maybe that's not the way we ought to be going.
Yeah. I'm a finance person, so I'll have a rich answer to that. Supply could get dangerous if I venture into that.
Graceful pass there, Mr. Hyder.
In a theoretical world, yes, because water is neither created or destroyed, it's constantly being recycled through the environment. That's the hydraulic cycle. That's, that's basic physics. We are a groundwater community, which means we're pulling water up through the wells. We monitor the well health, or the aquifer's health, every day. We coordinate with the state of Illinois through the Water Survey, and they're closely monitoring the situation. We've had a lot of population growth. When I say we, I mean the state of Illinois has had a lot of population growth to the west and to the south. The city of Joliet and its inverns are converting to Lake Michigan water as we speak. So that'll be very interesting to see how that impacts the aquifers for us, because they're downstream of us. So it's, it's something that we constantly monitor and watch every day. We in the Midwest are absolutely blessed in the fact that four-fifths of the world's potable water surface is within a day's walk from where we're standing right now. So we're very lucky in that. But water conservation, as you've seen out on the West Coast, and even in portions of the East Coast, it's something that they have to pay a lot closer of attention to us. But at the same time, it is not something that we want to take advantage of or take for granted. Water use that's been dropping has been through water efficiency, toilet fixtures, showerheads, appliances. It's amazing, the advances that have been going through there. They're, you know, just saw some technology of flushless toilets that are coming out using squeegees. Hmm. Don't know if I'm quite ready for that. But the world is changing, the world is changing every day. And we want to make sure that we're keeping our customers in that position to best take advantage of the situation. I know I danced around the question without coming out and telling you that we have an unlimited source.
And I guess you supported not encouraging using more water.
But this is a common complaint that we get. And every community, every utility is unique to its, and to its community. I've worked in other agencies where they have an escalating water rate to discourage irrigation. That if you want a green lawn, you're going to pay a lot more than someone that doesn't. There are others where there are second meters on the irrigation system, which creates an incredible headache for the finance department. I can actually feel daggers throwing into my back right now from Rita as she's standing behind me. So we, as staff, took this opportunity to address what we get as a relatively common complaint from customers that feel that they are being unfairly burdened by the rest of the community. And this is our suggestion. This is how we feel is the best way to address those concerns and still be fair and equitable to the rest of the consumer base.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
All good?
That's it. Good for now.
Before I recognize Mr. Bruno a second time, Mr. Maladra a second time, is there anyone who has not yet asked a question or spoken who wishes to? Mr. Kielberg, sir?
Yeah, I had a question. If you were to be asked, if you compared the, the water rate, the water rate is actually in decline is the more you use. And if you look at the comparison between the water rate and the sewer rate, the industrial rate is dramatically higher than the non-industrial. How do you justify that?
So the industrial rate is higher because of the fact that they send a higher-strength sewage to the system, and so it costs more to treat what they're sending, is essentially the justification for it. So they send more B O D solids and...
Okay, contaminants.
Contaminants, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
If you have, and this is a question that we've had historically with certain industries in our community, where the water is, doesn't, the sewer system isn't used for a percentage of their water. What do we, what's the rationale, or how do you, how do, how do you deal with that question? If in fact, on an, you know, it isn't an issue where they're not, it's not a summer issue like we're looking at here. It's a case where a portion or a percentage of their water doesn't leave their premises because of their, their production or manufacturing. Have you had communities that have dealt with that?
Yeah. When it's a, when it's a significant issue, they're really using a lot in the product or something like that. You can essentially have meters on-site, you know, to monitor that type of activity, and then they would basically pay based on that. It's generally something that'd be difficult to do on a global scale. It'd have to be more on a case-by-case basis. And it'd want you, you'd only want to do it if it's, you know, really substantial amount of water isn't returning to the system. But it's definitely been done from that perspective.
And the last question is, do you have any studies or indications of what, obviously across the United States, a lot of warehousing's been constructed?
Mm-hmm.
How do they compare to other industries across the board? As far as water consumption? I mean, if you're developing a lot of warehouses, are they going to increase our demand dramatically? Or is that, it's going to be pretty insignificant?
Yeah. I've, I'm from the East Coast. We have a tremendous number of data centers which use a lot of water. So those are big buildings that use a lot of water. I think warehousing, though, doesn't. They may have a potential demand in that they have to have the fire suppression system, but their actual use is pretty de minimis, from what I understand.
That's what I would assume. Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before I recognize Mr. Bruno? Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so the next question is, are last rate change considered attractiveness to industrial users and fairness to residential users? Is that correct? I have Rich Babica shaking his head yes.
Rich, do you want to address that specifically, or?
The last time we looked at water rates, that was the goal, was to be fair. The vast majority of our customers are residential, single-family homes, but the largest users we have are really isolated within six to eight customers. And we want to make sure that as a utility, we're being attractive to those large customers while being as fair and equitable to the customer base as possible. And that is how we approached the last rate study, and that was done in 2015.
It's not dissimilar to the electric? With respect to rates for...
I would agree, even though both my utilities tend to think that they work in different worlds. Two children that I fight with constantly.
Anything else from Mr. Bruno? Mr. Maladra, sir?
Yeah. On the problem of our rate structure appearing to encourage use, I just wanted to say, and I'm sure everybody remembers this, but, but we started in the financial section by talking about how we have revenue goals because we have cost requirements that we have to meet. And finding a balance in terms of how to meet those revenue goals, we run into situations where if we emphasize a fixed cost for infrastructure, rate payers get upset, and they more expect to have to pay for what they use. So rather than encouraging more or less consumption, I think our model just focuses on a, it's a use-based structure primarily. The perceived impact may be that we're encouraging use, but I don't think if, I don't know if that's actually true and, and fact, and then B, it's a, it's sort of an ancillary problem of shying away from emphasizing a more fixed component of the cost. I just wanted to point that out.
Mr. Kozarog, sir?
Thanks, Mayor. I was just wondering if the W Q A applies to industrial customers as well?
It doesn't. So we would...
If not.
Yeah, we would propose only applying it to single-family, because it gets difficult when you look at non-single-family use because of the variations in use. So you could have a commercial business, like a restaurant, that ramps up business in the summer, and it's all indoor use, and they're sending all the sewage back. So the, the usage patterns are much different and more difficult to apply a winter quarter under that. So it'd be difficult to have an equitable structure that actually captures their irrigation, if that makes sense, if they have an irrigation.
Yeah, if they have any at all.
Yeah.
That's what I suspect. I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Ms. Mayor, then Mr. Merks?
I'm going to ask this to Director Bob Babica. The summer use, so the winter quarter average calculates the difference in kind of a surge during the summer that would happen because people are watering their lawns and filling their pools. So is there any higher infrastructure need to satisfy the load during those summer months because of the amount of water that we have to provide to water people's lawns and fill people's pools?
It's an interesting question. Our water storage is based primarily on fire flows to ensure that when the fire department and other first responders arrive on a scene, that there's adequate system, storage, and reserves capacity to them to safely deal with the situation they're in. So that is actually the first thing that we're looking at. In the summertime, you know, we have multiple wells that will run more in the summertime. We have, at the water treatment plant, we have multiple trains that can treat water. During the wintertime, we may only be using one of those trains, and the other two are either being serviced or are just being cycled through to keep them fresh. But in the summertime, in the appropriate conditions, we could be roaring all three trains at the same time, twenty-four, seven, for multiple days. So irrigation is the number one in the industry, and I think, Dave, you could probably back me up on this one. The use of irrigation water is the number one consuming entity throughout North America. So that is still the number one use, not, not just in Geneva for green grass. I mean, I'm talking about, you know, the Imperial Valley out in California. So water is, is what, what keeps this country fertile. Our demands, you know, there, there are things that we can do administratively. If we start seeing water levels start to become compromised, we have the even odd water ban that's in effect. We have other categories that we can go to more restrictive day, time-of-day usage. So there's a number of varieties we can use to address that, to preserve it. But the capital projects that are being brought forth in this program that are driving this rate increase are not really geared or being caused by irrigation usage. Is that...
That, that helps. It seems like it's not the, the guiding problem that's causing the, the cost increases that we're experiencing. But it is, it does cause us to have to utilize greater amounts of our infrastructure during the summer.
Absolutely. It's something that we keep a very close eye on, going back to Alderman Swanson's question. We, we really do, for those of you that are going to join us for the tour of the water treatment plant, you'll see just how much we pay attention, probably a lot more than anybody really thinks, on the underground and the infrastructure. And one thing I did want to clarify, as I was conferring with the finance director and my electrical superintendent, our rate structure, kind of going back to that right now, the fixed costs, so what you're seeing there for the fixed rates is predominantly what, how we're dealing with our day-to-day costs to keeping the system running, whereas the usage is more of a flexible that reflects the actual cost of consumption. So the fixed base is basically what's, what it takes for us to keep the lights on in the facilities. And then the, the rates are actually what's allowing the fluctuations to go up and down to cover those volatile costs.
So the fourteen fifty-four that I pay as a residential customer is to keep the lights on, and then if I go above that, that's... if I go above that, that's to pay for what it takes for more usage?
Right.
Okay.
In a very basic sense.
Right. Okay, that's good for me, thank you.
Mr. Merks? Mr. Merks, your microphone, sir?
Oh, I thought I hit it, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I thought I reached on. When we borrow the money, what percentage of that goes into the base rate and what goes into the usage rate, or does it all go into the base rate when we, yeah, I figured? I mean, because without that infrastructure, no water's going anywhere, so do we put that mostly, do, do you have a percentage that you apply to base and a percentage to use or is it just all going to base?
It's primarily in the base, but we are proposing, you know, an across-the-board rate increase, the seven and a half percent across the board, so that's raising the usage rates and the fixed charges. And so it's, I can't say that we took and said, well, we're going to make sure that the debt flows into the base charges from that perspective, because we didn't want to change all of the rates in comparison to each other, so it's again, across-the-board, seven and a half percent increase.
Is that how we've always done it in the past, is not, I mean, I guess I'm looking at the base, without all that infrastructure, no one would get the water or, or the sewage wouldn't go away, would? Would it make, and I'm not saying all of it, but would it make more sense to put more of that into our base charge and then it's more steady for us, is what I'm, you know, because we know we're going to, we, we want people to use less, I mean, that, that's really the goal, I think, of everyone. So, you know, should we base more of that towards our base charge to know that we always have it?
Yeah.
Or is that a whole new model?
Well, you did, in the last rate study, I know you spent a lot of time looking at the base charges and actually built into the base charge is an infrastructure charge and a customer account charge, and so that's all rolled together. One of, and we did talk about potentially increasing the base charges more to try to get a more stable revenue, but one of the issues with that is that whenever you increase the base charge, that has a big impact on affordability, because those that don't use much water pay a percentage-wise, a significant amount more when, when you increase their base charge, because the base charge is such a big component of their usage rate. And you do have a fair number of customers that only use 200 cubic feet, 200, yeah, 200 cubic feet per month. And so to them, when you increase the base charge more, that has a really big impact. So that was part of the, the discussion we had.
Is it, is it typical for a base rate to have like 100 cubic feet, you know, built into it, or is that something unique to Geneva that we're saying, okay, the base rate's going to include 100 cubic feet?
So it's not unique to Geneva, there are communities that don't include any usage. Part of the reason to include usage is again, to protect the small user, is it does give you that benefit, so if you only use 100 cubic feet, you just pay the base rate. If you were to get rid of that, then you'd essentially be charging them the base rate and for the 100 cubic feet that they're using, and that would have an impact on the small user. So it is trying to balance that affordability issue.
But you don't know what percentage realistically it looks like that in the past we, we put, I guess I'd have to go back and see how much of the base rate really includes debt, because that's really all we're doing is just upping it by the seven and a half percent, I just didn't know if we knew those breakdowns in your study.
Yeah, I don't remember it off the top of my head, I, I want to say it's a significant portion of the debt is, is funded in the base rate.
Okay. All right, because you need that infrastructure to get the water, so, okay, thank you.
Mr. Kozarog, then Mr. Kilburg.
I was watching the meeting from whoever asked the question from, I think, 2015, when you said they were talking a lot about base rates and usage charges. You were talking a lot about how much of the fixed costs were covered by the base rate, and I was just wondering where we are in that percentage here, you were talking about 30%, I think the IEP A wants, or, sorry, the, the rating agency, or both.
Yeah, we see it.
Trying to get a gauge on where we are here.
Yeah, I think you're at about 35% in terms of the fixed charges. And so that's at the higher end of the range, I mean, it's not uncommon for us to work with communities where they're only getting 20% on their fixed charges. So, but ideally to be in that 25 to 35% range would be ideal.
Okay.
I mean, the reality is, if we, if nobody used any water, your cost wouldn't be reduced by a tremendous amount. You still have the employees, you have the debt, you have to maintain the facilities, all of that stuff. And so, and you wouldn't do this because it would just be astronomically high, but you could say your base rate could potentially be 80%, because it could be close to 70 or 80% of your costs are fixed. Chemicals, energy, things like that go down when people don't use, but the reality is a lot of your costs are fixed. And so to have a base charge that would recover that much would be highly unusual, would strongly disincentivize conservation, because people would say, well, I'm paying this tremendous fixed charge, I'm just going to use water no matter what, so you're trying to strike the balance there in terms of all these.
And the equity.
And the equity, and it would have a tremendous impact on a small user.
Yeah, for sure. My other question is that, the WQA, that'd be new for us, new for the city of Geneva, right?
Correct, yep.
What would happen if we didn't have that? If we just said, great to the seven and a half percent and we take the WQA out?
Yep, so then the rates would be the same, they'd be, be that column that has the 2024 status quo, so sewer rates would go up from 291 to 313, so single-family customers who irrigate would just pay 313 for, per 100 cubic feet when they irrigate. And I actually do have some slides coming up that show status quo as well as the WQA customer bills.
We would?
But the revenues on the system would be the same.
The revenues, that, that's where I was kind of asking, so the revenues would be the same?
Yep, we're assuming, you know, we're making assumptions that, again, that the summer will be similar to how it has been in the past, and so there could be potentially some variations there, but we've designed it so that they're revenue neutral. So that whether you do the winter quarter, whether you do the status quo, you should generate the same amount of revenue for the sewer system.
I guess I'm just trying to figure out why we're doing the WQA. It makes sense, I guess theoretically, for people that have swimming pools and that irrigate, I guess I get that, but why are we trying to help them? Where did that come from?
Well, it's, I think it's.
Yeah, I think, I think you'll see that in the next eight slides, correct?
And I think keep in mind that these are, we're not saying we're definitely doing that, we're asking for the feedback from the council to see if that's a direction the council wants to go in, because it is a concern that has been brought up over the years. If this council decides, no, status quo is good, that's good. This was just given an alter, an, an option based upon feedback we've received.
So that not effective, I'm sorry, not impactful to the budget, just really a way of making our citizens happy, or some, some of them? Okay, thank you.
I believe I'm accurate, Mr. Kilburg has a question, but you got about seven or eight slides remaining, I think we're going to touch on a lot of that, so. Mr. Kilburg?
I don't know if you can answer, I would assume you can answer this.
Sure.
What percentage of our water consumption is industrial compared to residential? And is the revenue generated, is that percentage comparable? I would assume that the industrial revenue would be greater because of the, the rate, but is that, is that accurate? And is it 10% industrial, 90% residential? Do we have that number?
I have it in my spreadsheet model, but I, I can get that to you at the end, if that's okay? I definitely can tell you.
That would be great.
Yeah, I don't remember off the top of my head. It is, it is six or eight customers that are.
Yeah, right. I just wondered how much of our water disappearance could be tied back to those industrial users and, and it would be nice to know what the, the, the percentage that, of total revenue generated, what that, the additional amount from, on the industrial side would be compared to the usage.
Yep, I can definitely provide that.
Thank you, that's all I.
Mr. Hyder, back to you.
All right, so I'm going to go through just some sample bills and I know this, hopefully this answers some questions, it probably won't answer them all, because the, the status quo is easy, as I mentioned, if you do, if you don't do the winter quarter average, we're recommending a seven and a half percent increase in water and sewer rates. And so everybody's bill, regardless of how much you use or the type of customer you are, would go up seven and a half percent, because we're proposing to increase the base charges and the usage rates seven and a half percent. So if you use 500 cubic feet, that's about 13% of your customers, again, this is just for single-family on the slide, three-quarter inch meter, which is the vast majority, their current bill at 500 is about 60 bucks per month, I'm sorry, $56 per month, it would go up to $61, so it'd be about a $4 increase, seven and a half percent. If you use 700, which represents about 11% of your customers, they currently pay about 73, it would go up 70, up to 78, so about a $5 increase, so 7.5%. And I won't list out the next one, that's just a large-using, single-family customer, but you'll notice that at 65% of your customers use 700 cubic feet or less, so most of your customers don't use more than 700 cubic feet per month. But again, everybody's bill goes up the same under the status quo, and that would be the same on your non-single-family customers, so we just picked some sample customers here, they have larger meter sizes, they use more water, everybody's bill goes up seven and a half percent under the status quo, because there's no change to the rate structure. Oh, and I should go back one more real quick, I forgot to mention that. Your typical customer uses about 500 cubic feet, they're paying $56 per month for water and sewer, that is very low compared to the national average. The national average is about 100 to 110 dollars per month for somebody using 500 cubic feet, so you are starting at a relatively low water and sewer bill. Proximity-wise, I know they're in the similar range in the, in the area, but from a national perspective and what we see in other jurisdictions, you're, have very affordable water and sewer currently at that $56. So in order to demonstrate the winter quarter, we have to show bills during the winter and then we have to show bills during the summer. And so this is just hypothetical, for somebody that's using 200 cubic feet in the winter, their current bill is $32. Under the proposed bill, they would pay $35, so they'd see a $2.91 increase. The water rates are going up at seven and a half percent, so that's a seven and a half percent change, but because we're making up for the lost billable quantities of sewage and we had to raise the sewer rate a little bit more, they would see a higher increase in their sewer bill during the winter. So percentage-wise, you can see there, it's a little, it's higher than the 7.5. Somebody using 400 in the winter, again, their bill's about $50 today, go up to $53, about $5 change, again, the sewer rate has to be a little bit higher under this scenario, it's, because this is happening during the winter. And then for somebody using 600 cubic feet, again, the sewer rate's a little bit higher, so the percentage change is more, they would see about a $7 increase. So then if I go forward and say, well, in the summer, if that's their, let's bait, that's their winter quarter, somebody who uses 200 in the winter, irrigates in the summer and uses 500, they would see a reduction in their bill from today. So they'd see a slight increase in the winter, but this person who's not a very big irrigator, you know, using 500 in the summer, would see a bill decrease during the summer from their current bill, so their bill would go down. In the middle there, somebody's using 400, again, not a very big irrigator, they would see a slight increase of about a dollar. And then if you're, and it, and where this gets difficult is it's different for every single scenario, so what, kind of what we're doing is we're scaling the winter quarter average, so that somebody on the bottom here that's using 600 during the winter, they go up to 1500 and they're a big irrigator in the summer, they would see a reduction in their bill. The person that would really see a reduction is somebody that maybe uses 200 in the winter and then is, you know, it's a woman widow by herself and she irrigates a tremendous amount in the summer, so she's got a small amount in the winter and a, and a big irrigator. So that's why it's, this is difficult to show, you know, broad cross-section, because it's going to differ depending upon every single customer and how they use water in the winter versus the summer. But ultimately, those that do irrigate would pay less in the summer under the alternative structure. And I do want to say one thing, so the reason, just to kind of drive home why you would do something like this, you could argue, and to your question earlier, Alderman, was do we bring on more systems in the summer to the cost us more to provide water? And it, it can, it can cost you more, but the reality is, is that you technically shouldn't be recovering that through sewer, sewer rates, because they're essentially paying for sewer treatment through their sewer rates. And so if you were concerned about the increased cost or discouraging irrigation, technically you should be doing that through the water rates, is kind of the argument, if that makes sense. Yes?
If we can charge, if we can use the winter quarter average to eliminate the sewer charge, can we add a premium to the water charge with the winter quarter average then?
You could.
Because that seems like it's raising our need to have pumping and systems operating.
Yeah, I think Rita's throwing knives at my back now, probably. There are communities that do that, that's just a peak rate, you can have a peak, a rate that when you use water above a certain amount, then you're assuming that it's irrigation and therefore it's to discourage it, you could price it more.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kilburg?
Yeah, that was a good point, that was what I was, I was going to ask, you were a little bit ahead of me here, but what's the impact on administering that WQA and how, how, how effectively, how easily can that be done by staff? So Rita, you came tonight for a reason.
The question is, what are you drinking?
Drinking water.
Anticipating the questions.
Yeah, it is a possibility in our financial software to do this.
Okay.
I did, you know, before we had this presentation, we had a discussion, would it work or would it not, and it does, the only thing I'm still waiting on is how fast implementation happens. So, you know, if you imagine your reeds come in on a monthly basis, I don't know if it's going to be able to go backwards, so like, let's say we put this effective 5.1, I don't know if it's going to be able to look backwards to look at the prior winter to see that. So that's the only thing I'm waiting their answer for, but I've been in there, I've looked at it, it can do it. It's just, I don't know that backwards view.
The resident would have to notify your department that you wanted to go on WQA?
No, it was just, no, the software would just do it. It's just going to go back, it's going to hold a number out there, it's going to say the winter quarter average is.
Okay.
Oh yeah, it just does it.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no manual process in there at all.
Okay, no declaration?
Hope everyone will be on it.
I'm glad, I'm glad that, that's the case, thank you.
Anyone else on the dais? You have more slides, Mr. Hyder, correct?
Yep, a couple more, so this is the impact of the winter quarter average on non-single-family customers, so because of the fact that they don't get the benefit and we are raising the sewer rate for non-industrial customers, they would see slight, slightly more of an increase. So you can see the sewer bill while the water's going up to seven and a half, the sewer bill would go up more under the winter quarter average. The argument would be currently, the irrigators are currently subsidizing because they're paying more than they should for sewer and therefore going to this rate would level the playing field. So this is what commercial customers would pay. So I do have one final slide, just in terms of summary and recommendations, and then we have the, the rates themselves, but we are seeing increasing operating costs and you do have significant capital needs required on the system. And so we do believe that rates need to be increased over the coming years to maintain alignment between your expenditures and your revenues. As I mentioned, you do have relatively low rates currently in terms of customer bills, it's impressive that you've been able to hold them constant for, for four years. But we do recommend a smooth rate plan, we'd recommend that over just waiting and then doing a really big increase. And then finally, given the discussion here, we do recommend the sewer cap, but understand if that's something that doesn't, doesn't pass in terms of, it's more of a policy issue than a, than a financial one, we would be much more concerned if you said we're not going to increase rates because we think you really need it in terms of the investments that are required in the system. The cap would recognize that irrigation water is not returning to the sewer system, it does enhance the alignment between the use of the water and sewer systems and the charges, so people that are actually, you are using the sewer system are paying what they should, and that 130% cap would be, what would be applied. So if you did adopt the, the rate plan and you went with a cap, this is what the rates would look like over a five-year period, it's again, with a seven and a half percent and then a 5% going forward. And so I do have some slides now following that detail the capital projects, if there were any questions in terms of what those projects entail, and I know Rich was going to be able to comment regarding those, but any questions before we leave the rates?
Mr. Merks, and then Mr. Kozarog.
Maybe I missed this, but how did we arrive at the 130%?
That's, it's what's commonly used in the industry, it's what St. Charles uses, you could, you could use a different percentage, but that's.
But that, it's, it's just, it's just a common.
It's just a common rate. So it's not something specific that was looked at for us, it's, it's a common rate.
Right. And the argument would be that you want to have some percentage over the winter quarter average because people do use a little bit more water in the summer. Indoor showering, things like that, do pick up in the summer. And so you have that buffer. It's not your, just your flat winter quarter. It gives you some percentage above.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Kozarog, sir?
I guess I'm a little confused on one part, which is why a so-called non-irrigating family would have a higher increase in the summer? If that's what I think I saw in some of those scenarios you had up there. I get why an irrigating one would be lower because it's capped on the sewer end, but I don't get why it would be higher.
Just because...
Heider, could you jump back to that slide so we could use that for context?
Was it, um, was it the middle one?
One more, maybe. Yeah, there you go.
Okay. So if you don't, if you don't, if you don't use more than a hundred-and-thirty percent of your winter quarter, you're, you're paying the sewer rate. And maybe if I go all the way back here, this would help. So if we, it's really this difference right here. Whoops, it's not showing up on the screen. It's the three-sixty-one. And so if you, if we don't, I'm trying to think how best to explain it. If we don't cap sewer usage, we have more billable quantities of sewage on the system. And so, yeah, yep, there it is. And so that means that we could charge, instead of three-sixty-two, we could charge three-thirteen. There's no cap on the sewer rates, so we can charge three-thirteen. Does that make sense?
I'm sorry, it doesn't.
So, yeah, when, when we, when we say we're no longer going to charge people for when they use more than a hundred-and-thirty percent of their winter quarter during the summer, that reduces the amount of billable units we have on the sewer system, right? Because we're now capping it. And so we're now dividing that reduced billable quantities into the same amount of revenue we have to recover. So that means we need a higher rate of three-sixty-two. Whereas if you tell me there's no cap, I only need to charge three-thirteen because I'm going to charge the guy that's filling his pool for that water that's not returning to the water, to the sewer system. But if I'm not charging him the water that's not returning to the sewer system, I need an overall higher unit rate for everybody else because I don't have those billable quantities.
I was going to say, in simplest terms, it really is just the difference between the three-thirteen and the three-sixty-two.
Yep.
For someone who's not irrigating.
Yep.
But if you're irrigating, you're paying, for as much as you're irrigating, you're paying, but you're paying at a lower rate than you would have without the cap.
Okay, I think I have it. Thank you.
Yep.
Share with the rest of us. Anyone else from Mr. Heider? Now, you're seeking direction from us, not a formal vote. The direction is outlined in, well, you want to go through this first?
No, the direction is outlined here.
These four bullet points, ladies and gentlemen. I would encourage anyone to provide direction or ask questions and comments.
Not a question, just direct, regarding the last point, that whole MQA thing. I think Brad's last comment basically proves Bob's point. So the people who are irrigating less in the summer wind up subsidizing the people who are using more in the summer, which I think is counterproductive. Very few of our users use a great deal of water, so most of our users end up subsidizing the few who are filling pools and things like that. So I don't think I would support number, bullet point number four. Other than that, you know, everything else you pointed out earlier about how we haven't adjusted rates in the past four years, about how we face the same challenges the rest of the industry faces, all of that just points out to, we can't avoid this.
Mr. Swanson?
Thank you. I agree with what Alderman Maladra said. I would add that the, the WQA also hurts our businesses, and that troubles me a little bit, too. They're subsidizing irrigation as well. I would not like to see that. So I, I am completely supportive of this entire summary and recommendation with the exception of the WQA. And with that stripped out, I would be supportive. Thank you.
Ms. Mayor?
I support all of the recommendations. I, I agree with Alderman Maladra and Alderman Swanson about not ending up with a penalty to the people that aren't irrigating or using pool water. But I think the, the separation of costs right now are skewed because right now, the water users are subsidizing the sewer rates. And if we were to correct that, we should also correct for peak, peak usage. And that would be complicated and, and difficult for staff. And I think that ultimately, it probably ends up in the same spot that we're in now. And we should just avoid doing that at this time. Thanks.
Ms. Burkhardt?
Thank you. Can you go back to the, you had a, it was early on the spreadsheet where you showed what our revenue, or what our, if we increase costs just based on a, like, just-in-time model? So in that one, so it would be, the water rate would go up thirty, it would, by the end, it would be thirty-five and thirty, basically thirty-five percent. What's under, then, under this more smoothed-out model? What are the, what's the increase?
Well, it's, it is higher, and I, it's, I should say...
That's what I did notice when I saw the, like, families' bill. Like, a total single-family bill would be...
We're, yeah, we're not necessarily recommending a ten-year plan, that you adopt a ten-year plan. We think that this is more of a sustainable, like, when you get to the end of the five years, assuming you adopted a five-year plan where the customer's bill is at, you know, seventy-nine dollars in 2028, typically the city would reevaluate, do another rate study and determine, do you need to increase rates in the future? Maybe you can hold them steady for four years again, like you did last time. We're thinking that under a sustainable plan, you'd want to do inflationary increases. And that would allow you to do more of the green down at the bottom there, where we're essentially funding more of the, the cash-funded capital. That's allowing us not to have to issue as much debt. Whereas under this plan, if I go back to the one time, the bill is essentially about the same by 2028. I guess we're a tiny bit higher on the other one, about seventy-nine dollars here. But then this is assuming we issue a lot of debt continually in the future, and you don't do as big of rate increases. So I think the period, sorry to be long-winded, the period to examine would be fiscal year twenty-four to fiscal year twenty-eight, where you do end up in a pretty similar position. About seventy-nine dollars there. And if I go to the next slide, you're at about seventy-nine dollars. So it's essentially just smoothing it out over the five-year period versus waiting and doing...
That helps me because I wondered if we were just getting more, kind of, that greedy, but, you know, going more for what we need to, that, that explanation helps me. Yeah, I support, I think, everything you had in the bullet points except for the, I think Alderman Mayor brought up really good points with, and that's what I was trying to ask when I was trying to talk about the impact of the more water. But, and you did it much better than me, is, yeah, I, I guess if I feel, I feel like if we went with this WQA, then I'd want to see some kind of peak pricing for the water usage in the summer. I mean, I'm thinking about the family that has, you know, three kids at college, and they come home over the summer and, you know, they're using more water. That it's not because they're, they're watering their lawn, and there is this impact. But I, I do understand that we don't, that we kind of want the cost to be borne, borne by the people, the right, from the right fund. So I'm kind of struggling with that. How would it work with, like, a house sale? Like Alderman Kilberg said, you know, it's not something you opt in or opt out. So I'm the widow who irrigates a lot, and then, so I get that, I get the benefit, you know, my summer from that, the WQA, and then I sell my house to the family that has five kids under eighteen. That next summer, they benefit from it, right? But you would hope that, but that would be a one-time blip, and then the next year...
Right.
You'd set their, their, winter would be much higher, and then the next summer, you'd, you'd see that.
Yeah, it's not, yep, that's how it would work. And it's, it's certainly not a perfect system. There are the family that comes home, like you said, with kids, college kids that come home, they could potentially use more in the summer because of that. So it's, it's certainly not a, a perfect system, but it does approximate. Yep.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Bruno has a question, then Mr. Caven?
So he has two statements. First, he wants to mull the WQA. He doesn't like the idea of not disincentivizing irrigation. And then he's added, I would like to know more about our ability to have a sliding water rates based on peak usage.
Mr. Caven, sir?
Thank you.
And Mr. Kozarog?
When I made this statement earlier, I'm not, I'm, I'm not trying to promote more water usage or wasteful water usage or anything like that. But I know that a lot of people do water their lawn in the summertime and with swimming pools and other things like that. And, you know, you talk about other people having kids home from college, and if, you know, they're watering plants, and, you know, if you have a garden, you know, in, any of those items as well. And I don't like the idea of the people that choose to use more, paying the additional sewer rates because it, that's not actually where it goes. So I, I understand the other points that were brought up. And I'm not adamantly arguing or anything, but if we don't go with the WK portion of this in here, and most people don't seem to want to do that, okay. Well, is there some other way to rectify for the people who actually choose to use more water, for whatever their reason is, to not, to be able to separate the, separate out the additional money that they're being required to pay for the sewage portion that none of that water's going into?
I mean, the solutions I've seen would be irrigation meters, which are a pain in the butt to deal with. There are communities that you can call in and say, hey, I'm filling the pool. Can I get this exception? You could do...
But then you're talking about one-off exceptions for, and then one-off exception turns into, we had two-hundred-and-fifty of them each month because I don't want to have to pay this other part over here.
Exactly. Yep. So the, yeah, it's, those are the solutions I've seen. Some type of irrigation meter or some type of rate structure.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kozarog?
Well, Gabe kind of just got at, at my question. The only part I'm struggling on, on these is the WQA. I know a lot of people irrigate in my ward, a lot of people use pools in my ward. I've heard that comment myself anecdotally many times. And I was actually going to ask if you've heard that, I've heard that before. You fill up your pool, you call, you get a credit or something like that. We don't do that. That's not true in Geneva. Is that, is that what I'm hearing? We do not. Fill up your pool, tough luck, you pay the sewer. You know, because I was thinking, like, we have an irrigation system that we have to get a backflow test every year on. So we know, you know, the city knows essentially that we have another device in our house. If there was a way of tracking it some other way, I don't know how you do it with a pool, or there may be permitting, but I guess you answered the question, though. There's really not any single good way to deal with that?
Not that I've seen.
Without this. What would you, has, has anybody ever done a higher WQA cap?
Yeah, I mean, you, there's nothing that says, it's just getting to policy. You could, I think that, back to the question in the hundred-and-thirty percent, I think typically when you look at usage patterns, you can kind of see that there's like a hump at a, at a hundred-and-twenty-five, hundred-and-thirty percent of winter to summer based on indoor use. So when you go above that, you know that it's probably irrigation. So that's kind of your origination of it. But you could go higher. Essentially, what I'm hearing this evening would be you do a winter quarter at a hundred-and-thirty percent, but you have a inclining block rate on the water side or some type of approach on the water side, which would essentially allow you to recoup the peak demands. Potentially, you could keep the sewer rate at a similar level and address that. The challenge is just time in terms of needing to get this for the, within the timeframe of when the study needs to be completed. And it, you know, communities often morph over time in their rate structure. So this could be something that you're making small incremental changes over time.
I would say, just in terms of my feedback, I, I obviously support the first, the first three. We have to pay for that infrastructure. But I'm just really struggling on that. In one sense, I totally agree. We want to discourage overuse of water. In the other sense, we live in a community where a lot of people do do that and have pools and things like that. And so what's fair to them or the other people that are subsidizing them, too? I don't know, it's just a real up and down, but that's my feedback. Thank you.
Mr. Kilberg?
So we haven't had a rate increase for four years? Is that what you'd said?
Right.
Okay, we're looking at a rate increase for the typical homeowner here in Geneva on an annual basis of four to five dollars, maybe up to six or seven dollars across most of the residential?
Per month.
Per month, right. So we're looking at six times twelve, probably about seventy dollars on an annual basis over what they'd been paying historically.
Right.
The fact is, is they haven't had a rate increase for four years. So, you know, if we want to, you know, if you want to live in Jackson, Mississippi, that's another option. I'm just saying, I don't think it's unreasonable, and I think that really what you've outlined here makes sense. I think as far as the, the bullet point four, to deal with these, these large users through the summer, I think that's a reasonable option. And I just wonder, how many, how many calls do we actually get with residents complaining on an annual basis through the summer when they start filling their swimming pool and they get a big, a big bump on their water bill? I mean, are we talking about twenty-five calls, maybe, or something less than that?
How much is, is the other question? How much does it cost?
Yeah, I, it depends on the size of their pool, but...
Well, Bob, Bob would take the majority of those calls, but I know I can personally attest about one to two a month.
Okay, so this isn't dramatic. So maybe, maybe we include it. It's something for staff to respond when they get an inquiry or they get a complaint, that it has been addressed by the council in this manner. And let's collect some history over the next four or five years and see if, if, if the consumer is satisfied with our response. That's all I, thanks, Robert.
I want to, Mr. Swanson?
I just wanted to, and this is for you, Mr. Heider. If we were to implement the peak rate for the irrigation users, so they're going to be paying more for the water, yet they're getting the reduction for sewer, are we ending up in the same place if everything's revenue-neutral? So we're not taking, we're taking it from one pie on one side, and then the other pie, aren't we getting to where we are now?
I can't say you get the exact same spot.
Understood.
But have similar, similar results.
So, again, I, I think we're, we're beating the WQA to death, and, and I would like to see it go away. So, thank you.
Well, Mr. Marks?
We need to raise the rates, there's no question about that. You know, I, I, I'm indifferent on the cap, to be honest with you. I mean, you know, if we can get it to work, fine. If we can't, I'm not going to vote against it, put it that way. Yeah, I'd love to be able to balance it out, like you said, but time is of the essence here. Maybe we can look at that the next time we do a study, but, and see how this works. But, yeah, we've got to raise the rates. I mean, you know, I'm not going to vote against the rate increase if, if number four is in or out, if that helps at all.
I was about to say, and I will now amend my statement. The WQA is not DOA, correct? Or is it DOA?
I think for this round...
I think for this round, it seems to be DOA.
But, but not DOA indefinitely.
Exactly, yeah, okay. So are you, do you understand that, Mr. Heider?
Yes, I do. This has been a fantastic discussion. Appreciate all the input.
Now, you referenced earlier that you're from the, the Eastern Seaboard?
I am.
Whereabouts?
Annapolis, Maryland.
Nice.
Yeah. Do a lot of work in the area, so...
Yeah, wow.
Yeah.
Questions for Mr. Heider still? He's still available to us until, what, two in the morning?
That's right. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Are you heading home tonight?
Tomorrow.
Travel safe. Yeah, exactly, exactly. Yeah, exactly, exactly. Take a long shower, will you, Mr. Hyder, tomorrow morning? That was Kilburg's comments. That was. Take it outside. It'll save some cash. Anything you want to add regarding this topic before we transition to the electric utility?
I think we have clear direction.
Fantastic.
At this point in time, if there are no other questions with the budget proposal, the budget, with the budget being presented next week, at this point in time, if there are no more questions, I'd like to turn the table over to the electric superintendent.
You got it.
Thank you.
Mr. Holton, welcome, sir. We have an international audience tonight. We've got Annapolis and Pella, Iowa with us.
All right. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So I will start out with a caveat that the Water Division is about five to six months ahead of us in the rate study. So we're not going to have quite the detail that was just presented. But we're kind of looking at the same issues. It was alluded to that Rich has two children who don't understand each other. We understand each other.
They're both grounded.
So our rate supplies and strategy, so kind of start out where we are right now. So for the Electric Division, the rates have been stable. The last increase was way back in 2012. There was a rate adjustment in 2014 that was revenue neutral to the utility. But since then, there has been no changes. If you look at the average Illinois rate for residential customers, it's up around 17 and a quarter cents per kilowatt hour. That was of October 2023. Geneva's sitting right around 10 cents or 10, almost 11 cents kilowatt hour. That was also, again, from the October 2023 time print. We achieve that primarily through long-term contracts that have stabilized our rates. So we've talked about this before at length. We've got our NIPA contracts run through 2042. Nextera, we just renewed that last year. That goes through 2030. With the Nextera contract, we get to take advantage of their large green portfolio as well. We've got WMRE, landfill generator. We talk about that every two years or so. And then finally, we've got GGF and Geneva Generation. We paid the bonds off with it a couple of years ago. So it's free and clear and we can use it to save ourselves money in the summertime. So we're looking ahead. So what do we need to do? Well, we would really like to see some load growth. And looking at Geneva and where we're at, the most likely place that's going to happen is in our industrial and commercial areas, primarily out on the east side of town. We've got SEMP, which has been in the strategic plan since 2012. And also, we're starting to see some build-out in Geneva Business Park. So Geneva Business Park built up and then kind of maintained the status quo. But with the economy and whatnot, we're actually seeing some building going out there. I'm sure everybody's seen the Route 38 Logistics just off of State Street there. And we also have the Hillwood Development going in off of Geneva Drive there in their first phase. So we've got three large buildings out there. So along with load, we're also facing inflation and supply chain shortages. We're really starting to feel the effect of the long lead times and increased costs for infrastructure items. For instance, the distribution transformer costs about three times what it did several years ago. So when we go to buy transformers, they get really expensive and it takes a long time to get them. We're also running into things like certain paints aren't being made right now. So if you need a piece of equipment covered in anti-gray paint, it's very hard to come by right now because there's a shortage of it. So it's just strange stuff like that. We're also seeing an increased pressure on wholesale electric prices. So while we do have long-term power contracts that help even us out, PJM is seeing costs come up. And we pay a portion of our power bill to PJM to bring us the power. So those increase in wholesale prices are also something we have to consider. So the two projects that kind of bring me here tonight, we have SEMP. So for the Southeast Master Plan, we need to build a brand-new substation. It's going to be called Couch Road Sub. It's going to be just north of Fabian in the intersection of Louis Bork. It'll be Louis Bork on the south, Couch Road on the north. There'll be a substation just a couple hundred feet north there. We'll have to build. We'll also have to bring feeders in from the north, from the Business Park, to help feed that area. The good news is, we do have a Rebuild Illinois grant for 1.2 million to help us offset some of those costs. And along with that 18 million, there's also going to be, the developer is also going to have expenses they're going to have to pay within the park as the park builds out to be able to feed those pads and that eventual load. To the north at Geneva Business Park, with the growth we're seeing there, we're actually going to have to pull the trigger on the Geneva Business Park III substation. So the first two, the first one was built back in the mid-'90s, the second one in the late-'90s. There was provisions put in place and some infrastructure put in place then for anticipated growth within the Business Park. That didn't happen at the time. But now we're seeing that load come on or potentially come on. And so we're going to need a third transformer. So that's going to include a third transformer, switchgear, and feeders. Roughly about 5.5 million for all that. That's going to serve for the build-out of the Geneva Business Park. Along with that, we'll be building a feeder down Old Kirk Road into the Fabian-Kirk Road area. Fabian corridor, if you will. There are some empty parcels down there and there is strong interest in developing those as well. There is an electric line running into that area now, but we're supply constrained. We can't serve all the load that wants to build down there. So we'll be building a second feeder. So to give you a picture of what I just talked about, in the top, at the end of that red line, that's the Geneva Business Park substation. So we'll be building a couple of feeders following that red line coming out of there to roughly Route 38, State Street. A couple of feeders will break off to the east, go down, cross Route 38, go underneath the railroad tracks, and then enter the northern boundary of the Southeast Development. From the bottom of the red line going west will be the Old Kirk Road feeder. Pretty self-explanatory where that runs, down Old Kirk Road to Kirk Road. And then runs around to where the water tower and the hotel is on Fabian. And then the last piece of that puzzle, for us anyways, will be the purple line. And that will feed in, that will be a connection back into the Southeast Development area. And based on timing, that purple line will most likely feed some of the initial growth in the Southeast Development when it starts going. The blue and purple line that you see on there, the light blue line that roughly runs through the middle of the green field right there, that's going to be an express feeder for us to back up Couch Road Sub. The deep blue or purple line, that represents what the developer will have to pay for as part of that project. So we're looking at roughly $25 million worth of bonds. I know the amounts that I told you don't quite add up to 25 million. But we're trying to build some cushion into the budget for increases due to raw materials, lead times, so on and so forth. So we made some assumptions going into the rate model. One of them was no load growth. We don't have any firm users for any of the buildings that have been proposed or that are in construction. Both the Hillwood and the Route 38 Logistics buildings are being built on spec. So we're not sure what's going to go in there. We don't know what kind of loads we're looking at. We don't know if they're just going to be high-wall warehouses with lights and a couple of office buildings or we're looking at cold food storage or light manufacturing or whatnot. So with that in mind, we're going to take a wait-and-see approach as far as industrial growth. Residential usage has been falling year over year. We discussed that a little bit last year when we talked about the Nextera contract. We are actually seeing our electric usage decrease year over year. We looked at a five-year projection instead of going out longer because of the unknowns with the industrial loads. Our goal is to maintain 90-day reserve. That's been set by the city council and with a plan to reevaluate in four to five years and see where we're at. We do have some opportunities moving forward as well. This is a good time to take a look at our rates and see what we can do here. Vehicle electrification, that's been in the news quite a bit here lately. We're looking at ways that we can foster more vehicle charging because that would be really good load for the electric utility. Part of that's going to be through residential time of use to promote off-peak charging. That'll both spur more charging as well as move that load off-peak. So we may be able to save ourselves some infrastructure charges when everybody has an electric car in the garage. We're also going to take a look at a commercial vehicle charging rate. So if somebody wants to come in and put a bank of electric chargers, similar to a gas station, then we would be prepared for that. Also, we're going to take a look at our solar rates, solar cogeneration rates. Currently, we do net metering right now. We need to look at something that both promotes solar as well as be sustainably economically for the utility. And last but not least, it needs to work within our billing software. So right now, we do net metering. All those bills are hand-calculated. Our billing software will not work with net metering. So we do those by hand on a spreadsheet.
How many net meterings do you have?
I think we're up to about 25 or 26. I would have to look.
And who's the unfortunate soul doing the hand calculating?
That would be Alyssa in the billing department.
Oh.
So luckily, we don't have to go read the meters anymore. She can do that online. But she's got to go, she's got, she has to go look at the meters, the meter readings online, put them into a spreadsheet, and it calculates it, and then we bill the customers, so. With that, that's kind of the preamble. I don't know if anybody has any questions up to that point. If not, I can turn it over to Eric with Stanley Consultants, and he has more of the meat and potatoes.
Eric, welcome. And your last name, Eric, just for the record?
Kam, K-A-M-M.
K-A-M-M.
Yes. Thank you very much. I appreciate everyone having me this evening. So as Aaron said, kind of jumping in here, we're not quite as far along as the water presentation that just went through. Where we're at today is at a point where we have a good understanding of where we believe the rates need to go holistically. So we aren't to the point where we're actually looking at individual rate classes. But I'll explain that as we kind of move forward in the presentation. So I've been with Stanley Consultants and doing this work for about 15 years and work with clients from municipals to cooperatives and others. And primarily, the objective here is a cost-of-service evaluation. So what's the cost for you to purchase and transmit power to your residents? So when we think about costs for the utility, a few specific costs. Number one, the fixed costs are really the things that, no matter what, no matter how much power you sell, no matter how much energy goes through your lines, you have that cost, right? So it's really not variable based on usage. So that's really your administrative in general and your salaries and things like that. The next one is distribution demand costs. And really, this is the size of the pipe, if you will, to get power to every single customer. So some of your customers, residential customers, don't require a very large pipe, if you will, from an electrical perspective, whereas your industrial customers do. So we want to make sure that as we consider rates and as we consider costs, that those are properly attributed to the individual rate classes that we're looking at. The next one is your purchase power demand and energy costs. So really, these are these wholesale power costs and generation costs that Aaron alluded to a minute ago. And I would like to compliment Aaron and the Electrical Group. They've been really ahead of the curve on some of the pricing for the city. I think they do a very good job of maintaining costs and using the generation assets you have really appropriately. So kudos to them for kind of helping manage your purchase power costs. When we think about these, just for perspective, your purchase power demand and energy costs really account for about 75% of the costs that the utility takes on. Everything else is, you know, around that 25% mark. And really, they're pretty fixed, that 25% is. So most of it's based on usage and capacity. Specifically, capacity costs, PJM is where all your power is wheeled through. So that's where you're looking at how much energy, how big is the pipe coming to you? So that's the capacity. And then you're purchasing power kilowatt hours, if you will, from WMRE, NIPA, Nextera, and GGF. So just for reference here, if you look at this kind of graph on where your costs go, this is specifically costs here. PJM, again, is kind of that capacity. And that's subject to change based on market conditions and constraints on the network. NIPA is really where most of your actual kilowatt hours and your power come from. And Nextera comes in as well as the next big chunk. GGF helps support kind of the base market plays that you've got going on right now and really helps in different situations keep your power costs down, especially in the summertime, depending on gas prices. And then WMRE is another portion, another small portion. But it actually, you know, over time, will diminish as the capacity of the landfill generators shrinks just due to the nature of the gas that they're harvesting. So when we think about the rate structure for the electrical customers, you're looking at a customer charge that's a fixed cost. And one thing I want to point out with your customer charge right now, it's not really equivalent to your total fixed cost. As I mentioned, really, your fixed costs are about 25% of the overall cost that your customer pays. And I can assure you that on your bills right now, your customer charge does not represent 25% of your bill. So it's just something important to note, and that's common in the industry. One thing that we have been seeing more and more is we try and push that customer charge a little higher so that you are better recovering your fixed costs. Depending on the situation, you know, for example, in rural settings where you have a lot more miles of line per customer, you know, a fixed cost is more in the neighborhood of $25 to $50 per customer. And I believe here, we're in the $5 to $6 range? Yeah, 675. I think I have that in the next slide. So, you know, it's pretty low, which is okay and appropriate for municipal. But again, it's something we'll probably look at as we start appropriating costs across the system. The next one is your energy charge. And in this particular case, especially for residential customers, you only have two pieces to the structure, customer charge and energy charge. And in that energy charge, for a residential customer, for example, you're picking up fixed, distribution demand, and purchase power energy costs, all in that kilowatt hour charge. So we have to make sure that we're pricing that properly based on usage per customer class. As you get to larger customers, you end up with a demand charge. And now you're actually able to capture some of the distribution demand and capacity charges and costs, I should say, associated with electric delivery. So generally speaking, if we're talking about an energy rate, it's simply, like I mentioned before, a customer charge and an energy charge, so a kilowatt hour charge. In this case, there are two kind of rate, there are two rate classes that this represents. It's a residential rate and general service rate, which would be anyone with demand of less than 25 KW who isn't on a residential rate. You've got a customer charge, and I think, yeah, 675 for residential and $14 for general service. And then an energy charge, which has to cover everything associated with that customer in that rate class. The demand rates that you have, you've got three specific demand rates. Medium, general service, large, general service, and large, industrial, which includes the time of day rate, just as an aside. The customer charge, again, is a fixed charge for each one of those. Energy charge generally covers the energy consumption. So this matches more, this particular rate matches more with how you're actually purchasing your power and transmitting your power because you have a fixed component, you have an energy usage component, and then you have a demand component, which covers all of those areas that we kind of talked about before. So just for reference, so that you kind of have an idea of the rate classes that you've got, these are all the rate classes I just represented. Residential and general service are in the upper right-hand corner. They're a little over 25 to 30% of your overall sales, if you will. So this is a dollar figure, pie chart, if you will. Then you get into your medium service, large, general, and large, industrial. A couple of notes with this, I think it's a really healthy breakout of rate classes. If you end up too lopsided one way or the other, you end up with large, industrial rates, sometimes subsidizing residential rates in some way, shape, or form. sometimes subsidizing residential rates in some way, shape, or form, or vice versa. One thing to note, though, is that those large industrial rates can be dramatically affected based on the industries that are in your community, how they change, and what the economy is doing. So, you know, as you look at that, that's, that's an area that, and, and as, as we build out some of the areas that Aaron brought up, that can change. The one thing about large industrial rates, I will note, too, is that since the rate typically follows your costs pretty closely, a variation in that will often result in less changes to the actual money that you're bringing in on a fixed basis because the usage price that you're charging then will follow the usage price you're purchasing power at. So I'm going to get into a few slides here and just kind of step through how we come to developing a recommended rate increase, if you will. At the end of the day, our objective is to make sure, as I, as I said, that we're presenting a cost-of-service rates, rate case here. So our, our primary objective is to understand what your expenses are and then understand what our revenue has to do to make up those, make up those expenses. So as we go through this expense outlay, first is purchase power cost. As I mentioned, you know, we're, we're 70 to 75% of your purchase power, of your overall expenses is in purchase power cost. Next is your power delivery expense. So this is kind of a fixed cost, if you will. This covers your A and G and all the costs to keep the lights on for your electric utility division, if you will. Generation expense is specifically the cost associated with GGF. So that's kind of a standalone item, but it definitely shows up on your balance sheet. So it's important to kind of acknowledge what's happening there. Next is depreciation. And while this is not necessarily a cash item at the end of the day, you do have to make sure you're recovering costs to cover your depreciation on your system. Another thing to note here is that this is net depreciation, so any, any capitalized assets is already taken out of that. Next one is debt service, and we'll talk a little bit more about that as we, as we look at your, at your projected expenses in the future. But as you can see, actually, your debt service is going, going down quite a bit right now, which means you're paying off your existing debt, which is great. But as we, as we bring on more debt to cover some of the capital expenses, that will change over time. And then finally, your capital budget, which is actual capital expenses, system improvements, et cetera. A few items to note on here. Your purchase power costs, as you can see, have gone down a little bit over time. And again, I, I would compliment Aaron and the team at the Electrical Department for managing your contracts and costs very well over time. What I will say, too, is that in assisting in developing the revenue projections, we are seeing a reduction, especially in residential consumption. That's, that's pretty standard across the industry right now. Things are getting more, more efficient. People are using less power generally and being more considerate of their, of their power usage. So I would expect to continue to see that residential piece continue to fall. Generation expense is kind of interesting because, you know, depending on the situation and the way that they're managing the generation system right now, if gas goes up, it will impact whether or not you want to generate and what your, what your capacity costs are on the, on the network. So you kind of balance that over time. And if I were able to predict what gas costs were going to do, this probably wouldn't be the business that I would be in. So what I can say is that it is volatile right now. You know, the, the industry in general is volatile right now. So we want to try and stay on the conservative side. So you'll see that in the next slide as we, as we project what our, what our generation expenses are going to do. Not too much comment on depreciation, other than we will see that go up as we put in pretty significant capital improvements on the system, and I've already mentioned debt service. As we go down, non-sales revenue stays generally pretty consistent over time. There's not a whole lot to talk about there, other than, you know, those are rental fees, those are some charges associated with, with penalties, things like that. And then finally, sales revenue is what you're actually bringing in from selling power to your residents. On the very bottom line, you see-
Mr. Kam, if I could interrupt you for a moment.
Please, yes.
Does the non-sales revenue fees include connection fees?
I believe-
Aaron, does it?
That it does.
Okay.
Yes.
Cool. Thank you.
Which isn't a significant amount, but it does include, but it's, it's anything that isn't kilowatt-hours or demand. Yep. Working capital increase or decrease. So this really represents each year over time, kind of what's happening to the working capital budget per our expenses and revenue. So it's been tracking along fairly well. Just a note here, as we, as we talk about this, that's, that is important as we get into developing our rates. The per kilowatt-hour price is simply your purchase power costs over the kilowatt-hours sold. And it's important because it kind of gives a metric of what's happening, how much, how much does it actually cost you to purchase a kilowatt-hour, and what does that reflect back to the customer? In addition, right now, you have a power cost adjustment that's based off of these numbers. It's been pretty consistent. We've seen plus or minus a mil, which is, which is one-tenth of a penny over time. So, you know, pretty consistent, and that's a good thing. We haven't been seeing major increases or decrease in your, in your rate base, if you will, over time. So this is a projection moving forward out to 2028. Aaron and I had discussed a few different projection lengths here, but I think, you know, what this does is get, gets us through some major capital investments and then gets us to a point where we believe that, you know, the, the, the rate base growth in the industrial and other areas will probably really mount out to what it's going to be. As we, as we go forward here, we do expect some increase in purchase power costs over time, despite the fact that, as, as Aaron mentioned, we are not necessarily increasing the rate or the energy sales over time. So we would expect to see some, some power cost increase. Power delivery expense, again, that's pretty consistent. It, it just kind of depends on the year, but generally, we have, we have applied some increase and, and about a 3 to, 3 to 4% increase year over year in your power delivery expense. Generation expense, you are seeing a pretty significant jump here. And that really has to do with the fact that you want to take into account the potential for a significant increase in gas prices and what that may do to your generation, generation costs. Of course, this would be fairly conservative relative to what we've seen in the past, but at least make sure that we're covering that in the future. The next piece is depreciation. As I mentioned, realistically, what we need to do is make sure that we're covering that in our rate base, even though it's a non, non-cash item. And you will see that it does go up over time because we are putting significant additional, additional assets in the field, if you will, that will depreciate over time. Next is debt service, and here we see another jump, specifically because as we go down further, we're seeing a bond issuance and large capital budget additions. So we do, this is, debt service is based off of debt service schedule for the bonds being proposed right now. So that also goes up. Capital budget, generally speaking, it's between a million and a half to $3 million, depending on the year and what's anticipated and what needs to be done. Obviously, in 2024, we see a significant capital outlay and having to do with the projects that Aaron had previously mentioned. As we go down, non-sales revenue stays pretty consistent: connections, penalties, things like that, rental, rentals that the city has associated with the Electrical Division, and then sales revenue. So as you can see there, we're actually projecting a reduction in sales revenue, and that's simply based off of the past year, past several years' sales revenue projections and the way that we've, with that way that we've seen those go. Again, this is probably a conservative approach. One thing to note here is if we do see a significant industrial load, for example, come on tomorrow, chances are what you will see is that your sales revenue will go up. But I would argue that for a large industrial customer, because it tracks very closely with your purchase power costs, you'd see the purchase power costs go up very similarly. So while there will, well, you will collect some more revenue from that customer, I don't believe that it would make a huge impact relative to kilowatt-hours sold on your working capital increase and decrease. So as we go down, obviously, the bond issuance in '24 and '25, working capital is really where we start to see some challenges. Obviously, as we project out to 2028, we're close to $3 million or 8 or 10% below what we need to be for revenue. So rate adjustment and how we, how we address that. Again, there's probably a few different strategies here, and be interested to hear your feedback on this. Generally speaking, we looked at a stepped approach where you, where you increase the rates, you know, 2%, 3% over several years. I think the approach right now is to say, well, let's just do a one-time rate increase, which would cover us and make sure it gets us out to 2028, at which time we can reevaluate. There's nothing saying we can't do a rate reduction in the future. It's been done before at, at other utilities and municipals as well. So kind of looking at that, if we did a rate increase in 2023, midway through 2023, you would actually see out to 2028, a consistent working capital of at least 90 days or more maintained throughout that time period. Once you get to 2028, that's when you kind of go back and look and see, well, what's, where, you know, where do we stand and how did this all turn out? It helps make sure that you got the capital reserves you need. Now, I know that Aaron also has a, I believe, a slide after me here where we talk a little bit about adjusting that days of working capital requirement as set by the council. But that's an option to help alleviate a rate increase. I will also note, it's been about 10 years since there has been a rate increase, eight years since there's been a, a rate change, but it was generally revenue neutral. So as we kind of move forward here from this point, the objective of this conversation tonight is to kind of understand which direction the council wants to go in terms of, is a 9% rate increase a reasonable amount, considering where we're at today? Which then helps me develop the individual rate class increases based on the appropriation of the costs to those rate classes? And also, are there any changes or discussion changes in working capital that would help alleviate that rate increase? So just some general observations as, as we put this together and have kind of gotten to this point. Purchase power costs have remained very consistent, and I think that, again, has to do with the management of the current contracts and generation portfolio, portfolio that you have. Residential consumption continues to decline, which is pretty consistent. Unless we see significant residential growth in the area, we probably won't see residential growth. On a per-meter basis, it is going down. If there are major changes in industry and rate base makeup, that can affect how much revenue you're actually generating. Again, industrial customers won't generate kind of the base revenue. They'll cover their fixed, their fixed costs, but they'll, they'll follow the actual consumption in terms of purchase power costs very closely. Working capital reserves, you know, is our, is a discussion point to have, which will affect the proposed rate increase, generally speaking. And also, we are increasing our debt service because of the potential bond issuance coming down the pipe. So that has an impact. At the end of the day, I think right now, the proposal is about a 9% overall rate increase. What that, what that does is gives me direction for how I, how I attribute the costs across the rate classes. So from here, we take all of these costs, we apply them to each rate class as they're used in those rate classes, and then each rate class will probably see a slightly different increase or, you know, class to class, depending on, depending on how we appropriate those costs. It's a cost-of-service approach, so we want to make sure that we're applying cost to each rate class fairly and appropriately, and then we go from there. So that's kind of the next steps for us. Can I answer any questions? That's the end of my-
No, I think it was great. Thank you. No questions. Who wants to go first for Mr. Kam? Ms. Mayor, then you have to sneak out, I know, then Mr. Kilburg, Mr. Swanson?
This is actually for Aaron. As we look at the capital projects to build infrastructure for future tenants, I know when we do a building, the utility basically figures that there's going to be a recapture of that upfront cost over a period of time based on how much usage. And that, from the utility's perspective, the more usage, the better, right?
Yes.
Okay. So do, in as much as we have any control over the tenant use in these spec warehouses that are going in, do we have any ability to be more competitive than other areas for our rates to get one of those larger users into those spaces?
That's kind of the, the $25 million question, I guess. Typically, for a new construction, typically, the developer pays the, the full freight of the line extension to feed the load. It doesn't come out of the city's coffers. So for the Route 38 in the Hillwood, they're paying, they're paying all those fees to bring the electricity to their building.
But not the substation cost?
Not the substation cost.
That's-
So that goes into the, that goes into the base rate.
Turn it-
The connection fees that we charge-
Yeah.
Is also a mechanism to recover some of those costs.
Okay.
So we charge, I don't know what the, the cost per installed KVA is, but it, it's designed to capture some of that historical infrastructure cost that have come before that company-
Yeah, I think, I don't think it's exactly the same thing, but there's excess, excess facilities required. Is it possible to charge back the particular tenants that caused the new substation with, with the cost of that substation, or?
We haven't historically done that. As far as I know, anyways, it hasn't been historically done that way. Typically, we, I've heard it been, it's been told to me that the, the city sets the table, and then everybody else brings what they need to the table, so.
Yeah. I do have to go, so 9% seems like a big increase in one go, and I would-
Okay. So before you, before you go, I want to get to this real quick. I'm going to jump ahead and then come back. So our other option is, we have pretty healthy reserves right now. So with the council's permission, maybe we can use some of those reserves to lower that rate increase to about 5%. We stay, we stay around 90 days, we, through about 2026, and then it starts going down, and in 2028, we're down to 74 days. The idea there is that gives that load a chance to come online and see-
Right.
And then we, then we know what load we have and what it's going to do to our revenues, and we've got a better idea of what kind of rate increase or rate structure that we're going to have to have in those later years. So that's kind of our, that's kind of our two options that we're presenting tonight, so.
So just from that amount of information, I think that sounds like a good direction to-
Way to go, and you walk out.
Okay, we're done. All right.
See, yeah, I gotta, I gotta leave, too. Good luck.
Congratulations.
You did. Mr. Kilburg, the floor is yours, sir. Then Mr. Swanson?
I think she touched on where I was going with, with my question. We're looking at increases these first couple of years with water and sewer, and we, you know, we tack this on. There's going to be some sticker shock. I think most residential customers, probably when they get their bill, they're looking at the bottom number, and they're not going into the itemized piece. Is there some way that we can, can, can draw this out to where we're not looking at these first couple of years, a dramatic increase, which could touch on, you know, 9 and 7 and a half, 16 and a half percent? Am I, am I processing that correctly?
Yeah. We certainly could. We certainly could. Instead of, instead of the-
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. And I'm, I'm in favor of tapping into some of those reserves to, to facilitate that.
Okay.
So I don't know how the numbers will flush out, but I'm just saying, I think somehow keeping that number lower and a little more level over a two- or three-year period between the two departments, I think, would be beneficial.
Okay. Mr. Swanson, sir?
Thank you.
Then Mr. Koceluk?
If you could go back on the expense outlay, please, and then go back one more, one more. There was one that had current year, and that one shows our debt service in 2022 was $35,000. $35,000.
Correct.
Now, you go forward, and in 2023, it's saying 602. What, what debt is that that just came on?
Okay, so, just for clarification also, we're talking calendar years here, not fiscal years. Not that, I don't think that's going to matter to your question, but I just wanted to point that out while.
Well, there's zero in bond issuance as well, so that's why, it shouldn't go up unless we have a bond issuance.
Right, so, and this might be more of a, a question for Rita, but we would anticipate letting the bonds mid this year, and so we're going to have some debt service this year. If we didn't, if we didn't account for the bond issuance in that second half of 2023, I apologize, but that's what, that's what that $602,000 is for.
It's new debt.
Right.
It's part of that 23, 756.
Right.
Okay, okay. Continuing on, did we, have, has there been any discussion about the impact on fixed and variable components of the charges?
We haven't gotten that deep yet.
Okay, so that's TBD?
Yes.
Okay.
I can give some perspective to that, too, and one of the things is we, as we put the rates together, I can actually provide you with an actual fixed cost per customer as part of our analysis. So, that's something that we typically develop as we, on a, on a per-rate class basis, so you can kind of understand where you, where things stand. Like I said, it's very unu, would be very unusual for any utility to charge a true fixed cost per customer. There's a equitability cost component to that, same as the water discussion previously, right? So, as we look at this and as we think about things, and to Alderwoman Mayor's, Alderwoman Mayor's comments, we actually do, for example, the substation costs do get attributed out to the different rate classes based on their assumed demand usage on the system. So, we try and make sure that, you know, we recognize, well, a residential customer doesn't cause, cause us to increase the size of our substation, but an industrial customer does. So, we try and make sure and capture that in how we allocate the costs across the system, which allows us to make the residential rate a little bit simpler and a little bit, and much lower, generally speaking, than an industrial customer, which is more complicated and ultimately is using a lot more energy, so.
Okay. And with the fixed variable conversation, one of the previous discussions we had was worry about as more net metering customers come online and there are snowbirds, we were worried about zero-usage customers and the impact on the portfolio. And, and that, we haven't addressed that in any way so far. Is that also TBD?
Yeah. So, I will go on record and say that I would not support a net metering program for a couple of different reasons. It is not, ultimately, what ends up happening is many of your customers are subsidizing that net metering customer. You're still spending all the money for them to have all the parts and pieces of the system set up for them to use, but yet you're letting them sell power back at the same price you're giving to them. So, it's like saying, I come from a rural area, right? It's like saying, well, I have this field, I'm going to have you come harvest all my corn with all your equipment, and then you're going to pay me the market price for that corn. Well, wait, but, and I'm not going to give you anything for your equipment. So, from that standpoint, as you look at, as you look at this program, while we can develop a net metering rate and the impacts of that, I will say that it's not necessarily an equitable approach to the entire system. It does encourage solar to come on your system, but it does not help the system in terms of recovering costs appropriately for that customer. They should be paid for the power that they put back on the system if they, if they give you power back, and it should be an avoided cost. Again, 75% of your, of your costs are purchased power, so if you kind of think about rates, it's not going to be the full rate, it's going to be a portion, but.
Understood, but right now, we have 25 net metering customers. We have a net metering program, so the question is, are we going to have a proposal or a recommendation as to what to do as more come online? Or are we going to have a minimum monthly charge?
Right.
For solar customers?
Right, and that's the, that's kind of the discussion that we're having.
Okay.
I don't want to, I don't want to scare any of the net metering customers we have now. They will be grandfathered, because a lot of them have signed contracts and expended money based on what we have today. It would be, it would be future.
Okay. I wasn't asking for myself.
No, I know, I know, but.
I have a net metering program.
It's going to be, you know, I can see in the, I can see in the paper tomorrow, you know, getting rid of net metering and my phone starts ringing, but we're, we'll take, we'll take their needs into consideration as well.
Okay. And, and my last comment would be, I, I agree with Alderwoman Mayor, the 9% in one blow seems a little draconian, and similar to the water, does it have to all be in one year? Could you do 4%, 4% or some, you know, another option? It doesn't have to be that one slam you one year, especially when we don't need it all in that first fiscal year.
Right.
So, I would prefer a smoothing. I, I'm not opposed to reducing the reserves, but certainly would like to see that 9% spread over a longer period of time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Kocerog, and then Mr. Bruno has a couple of questions remotely.
I was going to ask about the variable rates, too. I was surprised when I looked into it, when we got a hybrid car, that it costs the same to charge during the day as it, as it did at night. As a matter of fact, Director Babacot told me to tell my wife, make sure you charge it at night, I think because our costs are cheaper at night, right? But it seems to me like we should incentivize people to be doing the right thing at the right time, especially if that's going to be a factor in the future.
Yeah, I would like to push that kind of load into the off-hours.
Exactly, exactly. And so, I'd be really curious to see how this shakes out with, with that kind of program. Are we going to have an opportunity for that, or are we in a time-sensitive situation like we are with the water?
No, I think we have, we have time to, to kick this around.
Come up, come up with some other ideas.
Like I said, we're not as, we're not as far along as the water department is.
Yeah.
Or division is in our rate study, so we have, we have time to flush this stuff out.
Okay. But in terms of opinion, I'm also okay with using some of the reserves to minimize the impact, and would like to see some smoothing, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
We appreciate your wordplay.
Yes.
That was, yeah, more than a wordplay, but.
We'll edit the tape for you, Aaron. Mr. Bruno has some comments and/or questions?
So, the first one says, as large industrial users come online, those taxes can be used to abate our debt obligations, or is that one of the things where it must be paid by the ratepayers? I think, are you talking, Alderman Bruno, I can see you, so are you talking property tax rates, or are you talking? Okay, yeah, so you can't abate the property tax rates, the bonds have, are, aren't they, Rita, aren't they revenue-backed, or no?
Geo-backed?
Rita will come in and address that for you.
To get the lowest interest rate, you want alternate geo-bonds, which then, yes, typically, historically, at the city of Geneva, we have the ratepayers paying for that.
Pay for that.
We abate the, abate in the property tax bill, so if we keep that future process, yeah.
Does that make sense, Alderman Bruno?
You know, I always, I always knew Dawkins talked to herself, but I never really saw it in public.
Okay, and then he also made a comment that says, judicious use of reserve seems to be appealing as a bridge.
Okay.
So, and, and if I may, I mean, I would note, too, that this council at one point did discuss that reserve policy as to whether it needed to be 90 days or if it could fluctuate based on capital expenditures.
Anyone else on the desk? Mr. Malaudra, then Mr. Merks, is that right?
So, I agree with that, but as Alderman Swanson indicated, I would look first at smoothing out the 9%, and I'm curious why you guys wanted it all upfront. Is there a reason? Or are you just trying to shock us and make sure we're awake at 9?
A couple of both. We actually, we actually looked at a smooth rate as well, smoothing it as well as just, you know, an initial. When we were looking at the smoothing, it was actually, we thought we were going to have to have a higher rate increase, and kind of want it drop below 10%. We're like, well, let's, let's just try out, do a 9% and see, see what we get. So, I think we've answered that question.
All right, so I, I think as a matter of policy, then in general, I think looking at reserves, although we have discussed it, would be a matter of last resort. You talked about a number of uncertainties. We don't know the type of use we're going to have out there. We certainly don't know the price of energy in the future. In some ways, it seems like we're back where we were 20 years ago with the uncertainty in the energy market. So, decreasing reserves in the face of uncertainty seems a little bit tricky to me. So, I would look to smoothing first, and then if we have, you know, have to take another swat at it, then we could look at the reserves.
Okay. Is there, is there an amount that the council's comfortable with, is this, for the smoothing? Are we talking 3% a year, three and a half, four?
I think whatever is suggested, we just blame it on Amy, because she's not.
Was someone, was someone in line after Craig?
Uh, Mr. Merks, but do you have a quick question, clarify a question?
Well, just on the, the percentage, I, I feel like electric lost the toin costs and had to go second, because we, we were all okay with 7.5% for the previous presentation. 7.5 and 9 aren't that far off, but now that we're going, I, I feel like your timing is just.
But it's 7.5 instead of 21 and something.
Right, well, yes.
So, we're asking them to take the same approach, water.
Sure, sure, I get that. And also, I think that just saying a number 9% is, it's a little abstract. I feel like we really need to see.
Sure.
Examples.
We kind of skipped over that slide, too, as we got the discussion going. So, we did run, we did run, or I did, run a little simulation here. The 864 kilowatt hours is the average single-home residential usage within the city of Geneva. On the left is the present rate, so the first 500, I'm getting ahead of myself, the first 500 kilowatt hours is at 11.3 cents. Anything above that is about 10. We've got a fixed customer charge of 675. I applied the 9% to just the energy part, not the, not the fixed cost. So, at present, it comes out to about $100, which is convenient. And if we did the 9%, it would be about $109, about an increase of $9.
Roughly $9.
Roughly $9.
Yeah, well, and then the other thing that I just am kind of finding ironic is, you know, it's been 10 years for electric for a rate increase, and it's only been four years for water and sewer. So, I, I, I don't know, I feel like we're, you know, it's, it's past nine o'clock. That's all, just some observations. I, I'm not against any of these suggestions at all, I just find the, I just find it a little ironic. I feel like we're fighting a little too hard right now. I don't know. Thank you.
No, it's good feedback.
Thank you. Mr. Merks?
You know, I probably, I have the same comment that Craig actually made, you know, going into uncertainties, reducing, you know, the working, you know, the working capital kind of concerns me a little bit, but, you know, going 10 years, we really ought to level out these rates, and, you know, if it's 3% a year for three or four years, I'm, I'm fine with that. I mean, I think, you know, you know, if we, if we go into the fourth year and we're still raising rates a little bit to catch up, I, I think that's a little bit easier to swallow. So, especially since it's been 10 years. I think if we leveled that out over three, four years, I'm fine with it. I understand what we all have to do, and I don't disagree with any of it. Working capital concerns me, so I'd like to just see, you know, that, that rate increase go over a three- to four-year period. 10 years is a long time. We probably should have, our own fault, we probably should have never left it go that long on our point, but, you know, the working capital was there, and we were paying the bills. Aaron, some of that sales revenue, there's a, there's a, the P and PGM portion of that has a, a cost that always changes every month, isn't it, based upon?
Uh, it changes, it changes yearly.
Yeah, okay.
So, uh, real quick, that goes to how we operate GGF.
Just, just, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we, we run GGF behind the meter, and we reduce our load to PJM five days a year, actually, five hours a year. And based on that, for the coming year, PJM sets our capacity and transmission cost. So, that's where we save the money on PJM with GGF.
Yeah. I would just say, level it off, leave the working capital. If we have to dip a little bit, fine, but I would still like to keep it at that rate, but let's, if we have to go out four years, that's fine.
Okay.
But I would keep it around three, no more than 4% a year.
Well, we could, I, I think we can level it out, and we can work back down towards 90, 90 days.
That's fine.
We can kind of blend them both.
Yeah, that's just my opinion, okay?
Mr. Kocerog?
Just curious, what does a commet or anybody else charge as a base charge? Is it similar, 675, $10?
I, I should know that. I don't, I can look that, you know, I can gather that information and.
Seems absurdly low. I don't know.
I know, when we had the discussion a couple of years ago, I want to say Geneva was about half of what everybody else was for fixed fees. I know, and Batavia, I was going to say, I pay around $15, $14, $15 in Batavia.
Do increasing that, maybe not percentage-wise correspondence to the rate, would that help recover any of the cost, or is that really not significant enough?
Well, I think that's what, I think that's our next step. Once we, you know, we've kind of got our guidance, how we're going to do the rate increases, now that we have that, then Eric and I can work towards how we're going to allocate this, this 9% over all these years.
Yeah, that just sort of seems to make sense to turn. How many customers do we have, just in terms of accounts?
Uh, right around 10,000.
10,000.
Sound numbers.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Burkhardt?
Just emphasizing what others have said, 9% sticker shack, I'd rather see it four and five, 333, something like that, and I do feel like we're uncertain times, and so keep in around that 90 days working capital, as much as I appreciate your, you know, flexibility and throwing out some new ideas, I guess I'd, I'd rather be on the safe side with that.
Okay.
What do you think, Aaron? Do you have some sense of direction?
I do.
Mr. Cam, are you comfortable?
I am, I have to.
And Mr. Swanson?
I, I have one last.
Of course.
One last question. In previous iterations, there, there was discussion about customers in the general service class that bounce around due to demand charges, going over the 25, getting whacked with the demand charge, and going into a different class, and then two months later, going back down. And, and it was a 40 to 60% increase in electric. Is that going to be addressed? There, there was a proposal for a smoothing method or something like that?
Um, we have, we had not discussed it.
Okay.
We were going to keep that, I think, the same.
Okay. And, and my question is, do we still have several customers who are bouncing around during the summer months?
Um.
And could it be addressed?
I, I think we do, but I don't hear any feedback anymore about it.
So, people are just taking it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Probably at this point, you know, they've, they've voiced their concerns, it hasn't changed, so it's just the way the system works, so.
We've also taken some time to explain to some of those customers. I've received calls as well, and to Aaron and his team's credit enriches, we've had onsite discussions as to the philosophy behind this process, which seems to, to help quite a bit.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah.
And I think part of that discussion, too, was, is the amount of customers that that happens to versus the impact on the greater good was kind of why we, we steered away. We looked at it, saw what it would be. It's much like this, the water debate on the sewer cap, where, where, how you're smoothing that and who you're benefiting and not benefiting.
I, I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Gentlemen?
Sorry.
Yes, of course.
I guess my only thought on that is there, you know, I would hate for us to lose any of those customers that Bob's talking about because of this jumping around, so if we ever were to feel that we were on the risk of losing, I, I would, then I'd say, hey, let's look at something like, you know, CAP, the WQA for these customers who are in this kind of unique position, so. Maggie said, don't you dare.
I can tell you, we, we had a solution to it, and that's we only operate one of our air conditioning units during the summer as opposed to three, and it becomes very hot, but it was a solution, so.
So, then if you lose employees, you lose employees to that.
There are consequences to the workarounds.
Right. That's my thought, yeah, okay, thanks.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions for us? You're comfortable?
No, I think, I think we have our guidance.
I agree.
And Mr. Cam, are you heading to the Quad Cities to spend the night before you head home?
That's correct.
Safe driving.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your work.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Holton, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Take a lunch hour.
And leave, and leave the lights on, all that. Item three, folks, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session for the discussion Item three, folks, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session for the discussion on purchase of, lease of, real property for the use of the public body pursuant to 5 Illinois Compiles Statute, Section 122 E5.
C.
Motion by, or C5, excuse me, motion by Mr. Kilburg, seconded by Mr. Kosarog. Roll call vote, please.
Uh, sorry. Mike Bruno?
He says two thumbs up. Back on the street.
Tara Burkhardt?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Gabe Caven?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Brad Kosarog?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Motion approved unanimously, we'll transition to the.
I'm going to vote too, aye.
Oh, forgive me.
I'm looking here, sorry about that.
Now it's unanimous.
Yes.
Thank you, Rich. We have adjourned closed session. Ladies and gentlemen, I will entertain a motion to return to open session.
So moved.
Mr. Swanson makes that motion, seconded by Mr. Marks. All in favor of returning to open session, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bruno, aye.
Mr. Bruno says aye remotely. We are back in open session. Is there anything for the benefit of the community or ourselves that anyone wishes to share?
I have a question. When we do these presentations like we had tonight, is there a way to get a copy of it so we can make notes on it?
Oh, at the meeting?
And, and take with us, like.
Because it will be posted to the website tomorrow.
I know, that's what you say, but it's, it's easier to write notes right on there or see things or refer back.